We're all ready, Mayor.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of October 13th, 2020. We have one item on tonight's agenda, and I'm going to recognize our city attorney Catherine Walker to make the presentation regarding a report from the Charter Revision Committee.
Actually, the chairperson, Bob Thompson, is going to do the presentation, but I'm going to happily be Vanna White here and advance the slides for him.
Awesome. Well, Mr. Thompson, first of all, thank you for your service. It's a big job we've asked you to take on. Well, I appreciate all of your time, and we will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and on behalf of our committee, we would appreciate the appointment to such an important task. We have a great committee thanks to your ability to choose from a broad spectrum of perspectives in our community, and we are required we're required to give you guys an update every quarterly. This is our second update. If you'll remember, the last update was in January. And we're going to go over some of the things that we have already presented to you because you've got some new members, and then we'll go through the things that we've also just finished. Our first item, I might say that probably for the sake of getting through these as expediently as we can, I'll have you wait until the end of our presentation to ask any questions that you might have. Our first consideration was a stipend increase for the mayor and council members. All of you are, I'm sure, aware of the very nominal very nominal stipend that the council now receives. And we debated over how to approach that. It's always a sticky problem for the council to raise its own pay. And we also felt like the current pay is not realistic, nor does it provide for an opportunity for people who are maybe hourly wage earners who would have to miss work in order to be a council member. It doesn't provide for them a realistic opportunity to serve as a council person. So our recommendations to you are really based on that. And in that regard, we've given a range of salary or stipend that we recommend that is in the it's still in the general vicinity of minimum wage. It's not a particularly large amount of money, but it's enough money so that if a person actually were to have to miss work in order to serve on the council, that still would be an option for them. And I think that's a really important point for the council to pick up on. I think the public is possibly preloaded to be antagonistic toward increasing the pay of politicians. But the fact of the matter is, our system calls for our political process to be open to everyone. And in order for that to be a possibility, we have to be sure that it provides for everyone's situation. So we've produced a range of pay and at least, I think, a good body of items for you to discuss. And we recommend that you send this forward to the to the public for, obviously, you'd have to sharpen things a little bit, but send it forward to the public for its approval. And then we've also provided for the sort of a cure to this current problem of having the council raise their own pay. We've provided for a commission to be appointed to review the pay of the council and make sure that it's staying in step. Instead of us doing what we're doing now is recommending sort of a 50-year cure, which is ridiculous. So we'd like to get it to a point where we're making regular and measured adjustments so that the compensation for the job is always in step with the current conditions. Our next consideration was the reimbursement of the council for cellphone expenses. And just very briefly, we just thought that while that might be something that should happen, we didn't feel like this was the sort of material that should be covered by the by the charter itself. This can be handled either by administrative policy or by ordinance. But we didn't feel like it rose to the level of a charter issue. And so we chose to recommend not making any changes to the charter regarding that. Our next one is the mayor and council members' terms, the increase in terms and the expiration. And just briefly, we talked about an increase in terms to help us provide for longevity. I think that especially, we've had a number of years here where we've had an especially high turnover in council, and it can produce a situation where you have people trying to get up to speed all the time. So we approached it with very thoughtful suggestion to increase the council member terms to three years and leave the mayor's term at three years. We thought that maybe a three-year, an increase from two years to three years would be helpful to the city council people by way of actually getting used to the situation, getting an understanding of the processes that they have to learn, and then still having some time to be effective in a given term without having to kick into reelection mode. We also tried to cure the little problem we have in the gap between the election of an official and their swearing in. And so we have recommended that that the office holder take office the first Tuesday in July. I'm sorry, I'm reading that wrong. Let's see, the first Tuesday following the certification of the election. And this is quite different than the first Tuesday in July, which is, as you know, how we do things now. And we understand that the effort was when we came up with the gap between being elected and being seated, that that gap was supposed to be for the benefit of the new council person to have some time to get up to speed. And it was also supposed to protect them from having to vote on a budget in which they had no input. And while those were probably very laudable goals, we feel like that has produced probably more confusion and more disruption than it has helped things. So we're going to recommend that we that the new office holder takes place or is sworn in on the following Tuesday, the Tuesday following certification by the Election Board Secretary. Regarding the amount of time that a person should should live in a ward in order to be eligible. And right now, there is no right now, there's no restriction, there's no specification of the time that a person must live in a ward before being eligible to run. So after our discussion, we we came to the conclusion that six months was a good amount of time for the person to become familiar with the ward and be known in the ward. And then the remaining language is really addressing the possibility that if a person is if their change in ward doesn't come from them, an act of reapportionment in requirement would be waived. They must still live in ward boundaries at the time of filing. Am I going too fast?
No, if you'll give me just a moment, let me try and reshare this. I don't know what this window is on the screen. Okay.
Got it.
Yay.
That's weird.
The next question that we considered was requiring a resignation upon filing for another elected office. Again, we had a good debate about that, but we came to the conclusion that we did not think it was appropriate, we did not think it was necessary or helpful to require a resignation. So we have recommended not to change the charter in that regard. The next question had to do with partisan elections. Currently, we are not allowed to we're not allowed to use our party affiliations as part of our campaign for office. And we discussed this at length. As you well know, our commission is made up of a number of people who have been elected officials at the city as a nonpartisan office holder. And we all felt that was that's to the advantage of the city. I think but we felt like that was to the best interest of the operation, function of the city council was to remain a nonpartisan's office. And we recommend no changes to the charter language regarding partisan elections. Filling vacant council positions. We felt like the like the approach that the charter calls for right now is rather vague. And so we tried to give it a little specificity, recommending that that vacancies would be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of council after appointment and recommendation of one candidate from a committee made up of five residents of the ward for this vacancy. And then, of course, if the vacancy has not been filled within 60 days, council shall call for a special election for the unexpired term. Next was the appointment and removal of city attorney by city council. And this was, I really hope that you guys can avail yourself of the minutes to our meetings. This was this is a meeting where we had a really good debate, a really a really good hashing over of what the pros and cons of this move would be. And we landed on the idea that the the city attorney should in fact be or at least that the public should consider having the city attorney be an employee, a direct employee to the council on the same model as the city manager relationship to the council. And if, you know, if you've noticed that the language is lengthy on the next slide, but the primary model is it just mirrors the relationship to the council that the city manager enjoys. The committee felt like this would be to the greatest advantage of the city council to have an independent city attorney. The next question had to do with the city auditor. And now you'll see that the city auditor as a position doesn't exist at this time in our charter. And then you'll see that we recommended no changes. Primarily, we recommended no changes because we were not given a very clear idea of what the city council intended for the auditor to be, whether it was a well, we just didn't have enough information from the council's request for us to feel like we could have a a good enough discussion to make a recommendation. Much the same is the case with the addition of consequences to the charter for violation of the city ethics ordinance. It would be I think that the committee was absolutely interested in hashing out a good a good approach to our ethics, our ethics codes. However, I think we needed a more specific language as to what the council was thinking about, what they were looking for in terms both of consequences and maybe the scope of the behaviors that they want to cover in the charter. I don't think that we felt like the entire city ethics ordinance needed to be adopted into the charter in that way. And it could be problematic if the ethics ordinance were amended and was too tied to the to the ordinance, if it's too tied to the charter. So we would welcome another shot at that, just with a little bit of specificity, a little bit of fine tuning, give us something to argue about. Next was the requiring city council to call utility rate elections under certain conditions. And of course, everybody knows that we are unique. We're unique in that we are the only city in Oklahoma that requires an election to raise our rates for utilities. Again, if you get a chance to watch our discussion on this, I think it was a great discussion. We had a really good presentation from Mr. Kaminsky and I'm sorry, Mr. Kaminsky. And we came to the conclusion that probably the best thing that we could do to first of all, we did not think that it was very likely that the body politic would ever present to the community a recommendation that they give up their right to vote on their utilities. And one of the interesting things that we sort of fleshed out with Mr. Kaminsky's report was that we actually have very well-run utilities. Our utilities aren't professionally run on a par with any other city in the state, and we tend to have lower utility rates than the other cities in the state. So in that regard, we thought, you know, it's not particularly broken, so we don't really need to fix that, nor is it likely that that people are going to want to give up their right to vote. One of the things that Mr. Kaminsky pointed out that was problematic is that with the habits that city councils had in the past, we tend to let ourselves get backed into a corner. We don't put these things up for a vote because it's so politically risky. The council tends to not want to put up a vote for a rate increase until they absolutely have to, either by being painted into a corner by a federal regulation or some other mandate. So we considered the fact that, that being the case, maybe what we need to do is change the charter to actually require the council to put these utilities on election, you know, on the ballot on a yearly basis, at least one utility a year. So instead of trying to instead of trying to modify the public's participation, we really tried to modify the behavior of the council through this action that would actually have every year, every election would be an election on utilities as well as the obviously, the voting for council and mayoral positions. I didn't butcher that too badly. The establishment of a community bill of rights is another one of those that we were, I think, quite a number of us on the committee were interested in this, and we got a very nice presentation from Catherine. She does a lot of research on these questions that we have. And she came up with a fairly good range of community bills of rights that from other communities across the country. And, you know, they have varying points of view, varying points of interest. And so we thought that probably if this were to come to a charter question that needed to go through a committee process first so that the city council could actually decide what they wanted the bill of the community bill of rights to look like, what they wanted it to encompass, and what they wanted it to emphasize in terms of, you know, our unique community. And so it was, I think that there were too many of those policy or direction questions unanswered for us to really make a recommendation, but we think it's an idea worth considering. We would recommend that it go through the process of a committee first. Our Norman Regional Hospital Authority Board membership, the board was asking to increase its board by the number of two from nine to 11, and we recommended to allow that. We thought, and we had some debate over the notion of having board members that were specifically not from our community sitting on the board of our regional hospital. Some of us had more trouble with that than others, and we finally came to the conclusion that the remedy to that is that not more than two be appointed from other communities, that at least nine must be Norman residents. And then we recommended no other changes beyond that. Next was the requirement of a vote for the electorate for TIPS of over $5 million. That's how it came to us. We, again, had a, this was one of our best conversations that we had. We happened to have a, I think this was in January when we had the conversation. So some people were still out of town. We had a hard time getting a a full committee participation. We did have a quorum, but we only had 10 people. And having an even number of people meant that we were susceptible to a tie, which is exactly what happened. We did, however, agree that that whether we vote or not should be the question, and that we sort of scuttled the idea of TIPS over and under $5 million. We just, I think the committee felt like if we were going to vote on TIPS, we should vote on them, and if we're not, we shouldn't. So that was the question that we put to each other and put to a vote. And we came up with a tie, but we wanted to make sure that the council recognizes that 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 tie is just that. It's not a recommendation not to change. It's not a recommendation to change. It's a recommendation that you look at the conversations we've had when you consider putting this on the ballot. Our next item was to review potential loopholes used to skirt the Open Meetings Act. And while we were all in discussion being being aware of some of the things that were being referred to, we still felt like we needed some clarification from the requesting council member, something specific that they would like us to consider in terms of addressing addressing the loopholes. So we put in a request for additional clarification from the requesting council member. And again, we did that rather than not recommending changes. We just really wanted to have a better idea of what they were getting at. The next item is very similar to that. The review of executive sessions and restrictions on the appropriate limits of use. We believe that these two items are serious and worthy of our discussion, but we wanted to have additional clarification. I think that the council member who was requesting these changes had just gotten onto council. They sort of they sort of got added on at the very last. I don't think that anybody really had much of a chance to to produce a clearer statement, and we would like to give the opportunity for that to happen. We were asked to examine the ward boundary creation process or a process called reapportionment. And I think it came to light that the last that the last commission actually recommended changes, and this will be the first. I'm not going to say this right. This would be the first time for us to actually use the changes that we've to implement the changes that we put into place. So we thought we should wait and see how it goes first. How did I do on that one, Catherine?
It's good.
Okay.
We should be getting that process started soon, actually, with the census coming up.
And that's it, and I'm sorry about my barking dog.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any questions?
Councilmember Bierman has her hand raised.
Bob, your dog's got some staying power.
Bob, your dog's got some staying power. I tell you, some consistency there. Makes me think maybe he needs some daycare. I'm going to go through from front to back. I'm going to go back to the beginning and kind of work my way through that way, because I, I have a question, I have at least one question about several of these. About the pay increase, how did the commission arrive at the ranges that they came to? And how many hours a week do you all think we work?
Well, we taxing my memory a little bit, but I think that we we started on the premise of 20 hours a week, and quite a number of us having been on council, we know that that's not actually a dependable number. But obviously, you can spend far more than that, and maybe usually do. But we, we do recognize that it's also intended to be a part-time job, not, you know, a volunteer lay position. And then Catherine had provided us with some some good information about surrounding cities and their typical pay ranges. I think we tried to land somewhere in the range of what would be a minimum wage, or the range of minimum wage at halftime. So the, and, and the primary purpose for that, and, and I'd like to just interject here, I'm really proud of our committee for this because we, we had all talked about how this is a volunteer position and really didn't need to be paid more than $100 a month, and that was my position at the time, too. We received strong input from one of the one of the members of the public who was sitting in on our committee meeting, and he actually asked for the opportunity to come back and, and talk to the committee and try to change our minds, and, and he did. He pointed out that if we keep the pay at $100 a month, it really isn't realistic for people throughout the community, people of all ranges of income. He pointed out that everybody on the community, or on the, on our commission just happens to be, or that typically we happen to be people who are either self-employed or salaried, who can take off of our jobs at any given time to go to a, a meeting, or meet with a constituent, or something like that, and and that we were, we were sort of overlooking the fact that we also want hourly wage people to be just as welcome to this level of service as the rest of us are. And so he encouraged us quite successfully, I think, to consider having a range of pay that would allow an hourly worker to actually serve as a city council person without taking an incredible financial risk.
I appreciate that answer because that's exactly where I fall on it, and when I did the calculations at 20 hours a week for the range for council members, even using that top number of $7,800, if you divide that out by 52 weeks, 20 hours a week, it only comes out to 750 an hour. So at least for the council member range, we're a little below minimum wage still, which is something that I would like to stay away from. Mayor Clark would make a whopping 1125 an hour at the top end of her range, so just to kind of put that in perspective, that I do, I agree that we need to be my kid's about to come say hi, that we need to make city council as accessible to those who don't have the privilege and the luxury of taking time off. Thank you. That's good mail. Yes, thank you. Why don't you go give that to Data? No, I can't. Um, and so I do, I do think that if council is wanting to take this up and move this forward to a public vote, I would like to see the council range bumped up to at least minimum wage, which is still, as we all know, not really a living wage, even at 775 an hour. But I appreciate, I appreciate the commission's work on this, and I really appreciate that unnamed resident, that anonymous resident who sat there and was able to convince you all. Moving on, I don't really have any questions until we got to vacancies for council seats. Why did the commission not land on going straight to an election? As opposed, you know, to what you did, which is more formalize the selection committee process that we have been using in some form? Why not just go straight to an election?
Well, I think the question is how, one of the questions is, and Catherine can help me out a little bit on this maybe, but one of the questions is how often you can have a special election. But I think that everybody considered that the process that we were using was, the, the process that, that had really sort of taken shape under Mayor Rosenthal was a good process, and that it just needed to be solidified. I'm sorry, I can't give you a better answer than that.
No, that's okay. I mean, I, I appreciate that. I just, and I guess it was presumptuous of me to assume that that, that the alternative was discussed. But I like seeing this in here, and I've thought that we should formalize the selection committee process, and whether it was internally via policy or by the charter, so I appreciate hearing that. So for the city attorney, why only, excuse me, why only a majority vote to remove and not a supermajority? That's come up in our discussions in previous years about the city manager's position. And there was some, I thought, valid argument that a simple majority doesn't really meet the high bar that a council should meet in order to do something like oust one of our top city staffers. And so I'm curious as to why the commission landed on just a majority for removal and not a supermajority.
I don't remember us discussing the, the possibility of a supermajority. I think that we tried to model the relationship on the existing contractual relationship that we have with the city manager. If we discuss the possibility of a supermajority, I, I don't remember that, but I, I just can't give you a better answer than that.
No, that's fine, and I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want the city attorney to have a higher threshold for removal than the city manager. You know, my preference would be a supermajority for both. But since I had the opportunity to ask the question in that item, I figured I would ask it. For the ethics violation, this might be for Catherine Walker. Which council member requested this one? In order for us to find out if there is additional information that we could provide the commission to revisit it?
I believe it was Councilmember Castleberry that requested that.
Ah, okay. I wasn't sure, because I, I just couldn't remember back that far. So I, I mean, I think it's, I think it would be interesting to revisit with additional information, but considering that that was not a topic that any of us brought forward, I certainly wouldn't dare speak for a former council member about what they intended with that one. So I guess I'm going to have to kind of leave that one up in the air.
He actually spoke last night at the public hearing about it and stated that the current ordinance doesn't really have any consequences for violation of the the ethics ordinance, and so his point was, why have it if you, if there are no true consequences? So either you know, add consequences to it, or just take it out altogether.
Okay. Well, and I know that he is still ever-present in things going on here, so I'm sure that he, if, if he wants you to revisit that, he will provide you some additional clarification. Onto Norman Regional Hospital Board. This one concerns me a little bit. This, this is probably going to be a question for Brenda. Do any of our other boards have members from other cities?
The multi-county library board does. Pioneer Library Board has one from all counties that Pioneer represents. We each have one member.
But the Pioneer Library Board is not a board of the city. The Pioneer Library is not a public trust of the city, or a city ordinance.
No, it's established under state statute. And that, you know, there's a process that they have to go through in order to, to be a multi-county pub, public library. And you have to have these relationships with the cities or counties in which you're operating, which requires a board, which requires a board.
But it's not a creature specifically of the city, like Norman Regional Health System?
No.
Okay. I, I am concerned about this one. I'm going to have to do a little bit more looking into to see how many other public trust hospitals or health systems tend to have members from other communities. It's concerning to me for a number of reasons, but my big question was whether or not any of our other city boards allow members from other cities, because to me, that's a pretty significant precedent to depart from.
I don't know that we have any other boards that are actually public trusts.
Right, that is true. That is true. And so on the TIF, you said that you would be willing to revisit this, correct?
Yes, we would. We, we, our, our discussion last night, in our discussion last night, one of our commission members who was not be able to participate in the final vote on this, Tom Hackelman asked if we could possibly review it and, and come back with a, a more decisive vote. We discussed that a little bit yesterday, last night in our presentation, in our public hearing, and I think that it was the consensus of the, of our group that we would follow your lead on that, that if you wanted, if you wanted to take our debate for what it was worth, that was fine with us, and if you wanted us to undertake to come up with a more decisive result, we will do that as well.
Great. Well, I'm, I'm going to wrap it up and give others a chance to talk, but I would like us to talk about this at the retreat, because I feel like there are several items from the existing list that could warrant revisiting, particularly the internal auditor, since we are looking at hiring this position. I feel like we have to be clear about where their responsibility is going to lie and who they answer to, and possibly some additional topics. So hopefully, we'll be discussing this at the retreat and preparing a revision to the resolution shortly. So I'm turning it over to others. Thanks, Bob.
Councilmember Hallman.
Thank you. Let's see. There's a loud party behind me, I think, so if you hear the music and bass, that's what it is. Let's see, the pay issue for council, I think, is a real important one. I was glad to see that on there. Until just a year ago, I was actually an hourly employee. So I really, for six years, had to be pretty strategic about how I went about city council as far as leaving work or missing work for city council functions. If I had to, I could just chalk it up as this, this meeting is costing me, you know, what I make per hour at work. And so that was fine, and thankfully, my job allowed people to come to my job and see me and talk to me about city stuff on a regular basis. So I didn't have to miss work often, but it was definitely a challenge for sure to have to work for an hourly wage and dedicate your daytime to city council stuff, too. So, but I agree, it is still a volunteer type of position, and being able to pay some sort of, this is kind of the range that I've really been thinking about when people have asked me over the years. People are always really surprised when they hear what the city council gets paid, when they hear it's $100. Oh, pretty much 100% of the time, people are pretty surprised by that. And I, I tell them, yeah, it's been that way since 1981, I believe. And I think with inflation, it might be around 300 or so. I'm not sure entirely, but but I had, when they think, well, what do you think it should be? And I said, well, I don't know, somewhere around 500 would be good. I think that would allow me to cover some of the expenses I have, you know, when it comes to just time or bill, like cellphone, or maybe gas, car insurance, whatever it may be. It could help me to provide materials or do some other things as well, instead of having to maybe use campaign money from when you ran last time, or just having to use your own money out of your own pocket from your other job. And so I think this would definitely help encourage more people, a more wide range of people in our community, a lot of which do work hourly wage jobs, to consider city council service as something they could practically do. So excited to see that one on there. I don't really have any questions about it. I do agree with Councilmember Bierman. I'd like to see, you know, it be at the, at least that minimum threshold. And then the cell phones, my only question about that in regard to the no change recommendation is that the oath of office we take, talking about the, the compensation that we can accept, you know, being no more than X amount of dollars, and no other I've taken the oath four times. I can't remember it word for word yet, but so I'm wondering if we, just by administrative policy, added cellphone, city council cellphone bill is covered or reimbursed, does it need a charter amendment, or charter amendment to address that no further compensation situation? Would be my only question about that part. And then terms, just to be clear about it, you'd have, half the council would be up one year, half the council would be up the next year, the mayor would be up the next year, and then that first set of council members would be up again that third year is the way I, so the mayor would never run on city council elections, once that was established, is what I understood.
That's, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right about that, and we felt like that actually appropriately gave the spotlight to the mayoral election, the spotlight that it deserves. It is a, you know, it is a momentous thing for the city, and we felt like that gave it the, the singular attention that it deserves to have.
Appreciate that. And I, I would like to see that change as well. I think, I don't, I really don't know how members of Congress are able to do two years. It's hard doing city council for two years and getting into it. Living in your ward, I think that's definitely appropriate, that people live in the ward six months. Sounds good to me. That'd be a requirement. I, I like no partisan elections. I think people that care about what's going on in Norman and about city council, and city council and mayoral elections don't need to be told by our city charter what party people are affiliated with. Anybody that cares can, in my opinion, can tell pretty easily where people stand on issues if you ask, or if you watch those debates and things like that. City attorney being part of city council, that is something we talked about a lot. I'm open to discussing that one further as well, and the impacts that would have. I think there could be a lot of value in it being a city employee. I could definitely see some drawbacks as well, specifically that threshold of just five. I would like to see a supermajority to be able to, you know, part ways with the top officials like that. City auditor is something I want to talk about more. Ethics is one we had a lot of conversation about a couple of years ago. We found it really difficult to come up with a way for the council to police the council. A lot of us felt that it's not really my job to babysit or police the other city council members. We're all adults. And if your voters in your district don't like your behavior, they can vote you right out of there. So we kind of had a hard time figuring out how to do it without it being turned into some sort of sword instead of a shield being used by council members against other council members to go after each other. So we struggled with that even before we sent it to the charter review to figure out what to do. That's partly why we, I think, Councilmember Castleberry sent that forward. I like the idea of utility rates, being able to kind of not let the council put it off, because it is really difficult to do. We do put it off until we have to, and that can be five or six years. The last water rate between times was nine years. And that's just unheard of, I think, pretty much anywhere in the whole country, for a city to go that long without adjusting the rates. So I understand voters may not want to do it all the time, but I think there's got to be some sort of mechanism that gives the council the ability to put it forward without it being a politically viewed as a politically motivated, or the council members worrying that it's a politically motivated type thing. So politically motivated type thing. So I think that's, I had some other stuff written down, but I can't read them all. So, that's all the ones I had. I look forward to further discussion about this stuff. Thank you so much, Bob, and everyone else that served.
Okay, we have-
Eight minutes leave, eight minutes left.
And, and just, so you know, this will be a subject on your retreat agenda on Friday, so you'll have opportunity to discuss it further, and for those of you that won't have the opportunity to speak tonight, you'll have an opportunity to speak then. Councilmember Petron.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work, Bob, and to the entire committee. I know that you all have had deep deliberations on this, and we appreciate your time, and hope that you'll give us some more, because I think we all have some further things that we'd like to send your way or clarification. How many members were absent during the TIF vote? You said it came 5-5 tie?
I think, I think at that time, we had 15 members on our commission. I'm, I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
And so we had, you know, we had a third of the committee was gone.
Okay.
We, we had a quorum, but I think there were, I know for sure there were people who wished they could be there and weren't able to be there.
Okay. My initial thoughts on that are, just by sheer fact that it came out tied, that it probably would be a good question for the people at large. And I happen to agree with you that, I listened the other night, to some of it anyway, and that the $5 million was somewhat of an arbitrary number, and so if this is something that, that people feel strongly about, then we should probably let them weigh in. But I do think I'd like to hear more deliberation from you all as well, perhaps, but... In your discussion, somebody called Norman Regional Hospital, one of the cleanup language. What, what was cleanup language? I didn't hear that tonight, but I heard it the other night, and I jotted down a note, because I wasn't sure what it was referring to. Was it under the, how many board members there would be?
I think I said that last night. I don't have that language in front of me, but I, I think there's, I may have just characterized the board membership change as a cleanup. There was another item, and I'm not sure if it was this one or not, where there was actually a typographical error cleanup, so I'm not sure if that, if it was this one.
Oh, maybe it was a typographical error. I share the same concerns that Councilmember Beerman does about having non-Norman residents sitting on a public trust for the city of Norman. And I definitely share concerns. I don't know how she feels about this, but taking it from 9:00 to 11:00, I mean, you're hearing some debate taking place in our body politic right now about Supreme Court, and taking it from 9:00 to 11:00. And what a difference that really can make. So I think that that bears further deliberation from the council. And I would like to understand the reasoning for it. Was a presentation given as to why they would want to do that?
Yes.
Who gave the presentation?
Committee member Coverley, Doug Coverley, is also the chairman of the Board for Norman Regional Health Systems, or Norman Regional Hospital Authority, and he provided a presentation to the commission about what, what the background was for the request.
And that- Would it be possible that we could get that presentation sent to council members?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I assume that he voted on it as well and filled with questions?
He did.
Okay. I'm also interested in, Councilmember Beerman brought up other public trust hospitals and other communities, and I would like to know how they function in other communities, and if, you know, ours is to, you know, the same relationship as what other communities in the United States are using with their hospital system. And I have several, I'm gonna try to keep us on time, but here, I have one question about, on the utilities election, and you have yearly. That seems to me like it would be somewhat of ballot fatigue for people to feel like every year they're voting on utilities. Was there a reason why you chose yearly and not like every three years with a mayoral election?
I, I think, I think we were following the lead of Mr. Kaminsky on producing a predictable, predictable increases in the revenues for, you know, for management purposes, and so since we had, at that time, we were talking about three utilities. We're just thinking of a utility each year, and as, you know, in terms of ballot fatigue, our, I think it was our vision to put those on the ballot along with the election of the public officials, so it would be an item, you know, along with the public officials, but not necessarily a ballot of its own.
Yeah. My initial thought was just that people would think, God, didn't we just vote on this? We just approved one. Not necessarily, anyway. And then for the council retreat, I'd like to hear from Ms. Walker what the new award apportionment, reapportionment rules are. I'm just curious how that's gonna play out. And then the hourly wage, I just wanted to chime in that it's not just the amount of time that you're away from your job, for wage earners especially, but also childcare. It's, I don't think the public probably realizes how much this volunteer job can cost, and so we really would like to open it up for other people, to where it's, they're not thinking about how much is this costing me. And by the way, it wouldn't be taking effect, from what I see, on the recommendation. It's, nobody would be voting for themselves a raise. This would be in years to come before it would kick in, but... And I think about public school teachers that have to get substitutes, so you can only have so many per year before you start paying for those yourself. So we want to make sure that everybody that is interested in serving their city doesn't see this as a prohibition on being able to do so. And then I would also encourage, and I'm probably gonna send it to you all as well, that Oklahoma City is on their November ballot, Prop 5. I found it really interesting, and so I would encourage the chair to take a look at the Oklahoma City ballot Prop 5, and see what you think about that, because I'll probably be sending something to you all along those same lines to see what we could accomplish here in Norman. Thank you.
All right, we are about out of time. I wanted to, once again, thank you, Mr. Thompson, for leading the initiative. I think if you thought the end was in sight, you may be mistaken. At our retreat on Friday, I believe we will have a new list of things for you to consider. So what would be helpful between then and now is if you could provide a list to Brenda of all of the specific things you need clarification on, so we can make sure we answer that for you while we give you your new to-do list. So, again, thank you so much for your service. We're gonna need you a little bit longer. Please pass on my appreciation to everyone on the commission as well.
We'll do that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, it is 6:30. Does anyone need a break, or shall we press on? Okay, not seeing any hands go up. Good evening, and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of October 13, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Hallman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Nash, were you skipped?
Yes, I was, but I am here.
I'm so sorry. I thought I would look like the short one.
You're back. Yeah, okay. Well, well done. Good teamwork there. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item three is the nomination and appointment of Joe Carter to fill the council vacancy in Ward 2. I'll entertain a motion to appoint or reject Joe Carter.
So moved.
Second.
All right. The motion on the floor is to appoint Joe Carter. Are there any comments from council regarding the appointment?
Councilmember Hall?
So on September 21st, the city council rejected the recommendation of the Ward 2 selection committee for multiple reasons that have already been stated, with the primary reason being that none of the candidates that applied and were interviewed had the support of more than two people out of five on the selection committee. It is important to understand that the role of the selection committee is advisory only. The final decision rests with the council. I appreciate all of those who are willing to apply, and those that volunteered to serve on the selection committee. We all share the responsibility of a failed selection process, and I am committed to do the work required to, to provide the clarity and the consistency that we need to improve this process. No one would have imagined in July of 2019 that we would return to this process four times in a little over a year. None of us could have imagined that we would be losing a valued colleague with so much promise just six weeks into his term. My goal, following the devastating news of David Perry's death, was to provide a path for Ward 2 voters to get to the ballot box as soon as possible, to select a new Ward 2 council member to represent them. A special election for Ward 2 will take place in February as mandated by our charter, and that person will take their seat immediately following the election. That's because this is a special election. The winning candidate, as I said, will be sworn in in February. Because wards 1, 3, 5, and 7 are a regular election, those winning candidates will not be sworn in until July. There has been a lot of misinformation about this, so I think it's important for the public to understand the process going forward. It is also important to me to have Ward 2 represented at the city council retreat that is being held this coming weekend. This retreat has already been rescheduled twice, because not all council members could be present. I am especially sensitive to this, because last year, Ward 4, the Ward 4 seat was vacant, so Ward 4 had no representation and no voice in setting the goals for the year. If you know anything at all about me, you should know that I consider voting in all, in every single election, the most important privilege and responsibility that we all have as citizens. I'm grateful to my mother, who was a poll worker for years, for imprinting on me the power of one vote. So not only have I looked for a path forward to get Ward 2 back to the ballot box, I've looked to past elections in Ward 2 as well. David Perry was elected by a majority of Ward 2 voters last February, defeating two other candidates. I've had so many people say to me, we want another David Perry. David Perry was one of a kind. He is irreplaceable. He was preparing himself for years to finally have this opportunity to serve the community that he loved. As a council, we have already publicly committed to move forward with issues that he was prepared to discuss with us at our council retreat, and with some of the things that we just talked about in our Charter Review Commission. Tragically for all of us, we will not have that opportunity to hear from him. So what we do have is a former council member who was also elected by a majority in Ward 2 over three other candidates. What we do have is a former council member that does not have to go through an orientation program that takes hours and hours, provided by every department head in the city of Norman. What we do have is a former council member that has the experience of how this all works, and the familiarity with the breadth and depth of the serious issues that we face as a community. What we do have is a former council member that is willing to step up and serve when needed, despite the fact that this was not his plan. What we do have is a former council member that has to live with his voting record, just like we all do, and who has to be accountable to the constituents in his ward, just like we all do. And what we do have is a council member who has publicly stated that he will honor and support David Perry's goals and values. For stability, for immediate representation for Ward 2, and for all of us to get to February 9th, when a new Ward 2 council member is sworn in, I will be supporting the nomination for Joe Carter tonight. Since many of you have asked, as a council member, I'm in the business of building relationships with my colleagues, with my constituents in Ward 4, and residents across Norman, who I also represent more broadly. Do I talk to a diverse group of people representing all imaginable points of view every day? Yes, I do. This is an important part of my job and all of our jobs. Have I talked to Joe Carter? Yes, hundreds of times over the life of our friendship. Did I call Joe Carter the day David Perry died to share our grief? Yes. Have I spoken to him since then? Yes. Have I talked to Sean Boyd? Yes. Have I talked to David Perry's son, Britton Perry? Yes. Have I talked to David Perry's widow, Margaret Phillips? Yes. Have I talked to former Ward 2 council member, Alicia Carjola? Yes. Have I talked to countless residents of Ward 2 to understand their loss and how much they admired David Perry? Yes. Was I honored to be asked by David Perry's widow, Margaret, and David Perry's son, Britton, to represent all of us on the city council at our friend David Perry's memorial, memorial service? Yes, I was honored and privileged beyond words.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other comments?
Councilmember Nash?
Between January 8th, 2019, and June 23rd, 2020, Joe Carter was absent or tardy for 36 out of 99 of those council meetings, study sessions, conferences, special sessions. It's, over a third of the time, he wasn't present. Is it better than nothing? Well, having a council member that doesn't participate gives the illusion of representation. And I think we can do better for Ward 2. Because Ward 2 deserves better, at the very least. Take it to vote, because I don't think that this is a, an adequate replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other comments?
Councilmember Petron?
Mayor, is it possible to allow Joe Carter to speak to that, to, to let it, his, the Ward 2 know if he's gonna be able to, he's got a place in his life at this moment in time where he can make the meetings?
I'm fine with that.
Is he on the call?
Joe? Hello? Can you hear me?
Hi, Joe.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to offer you a moment to respond to that, to see about, you know, what's going on with your life these days, and if you would be able to make a commitment to Ward 2, that you could be present for study sessions and council meetings.
Certainly can. I mean, I know I, I mean, I don't remember all the dates that Councilmember Nash ran by there, but I do remember having kidney stones and kidney stone surgery, and missing several meetings with that, and two major deaths in my family that I did have to go to funerals and tend to matters. I do also remember getting contaminated or exposed to COVID by Rudy Govere at Mahogany's restaurant after the Thunder game. I actually sought one of the council members' advice out on that, and was recommended to not attend our meeting because of that. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of odd circumstances, and, but yeah, I feel like I can fully represent Ward 2 and, and do the job beforehand.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to add at all, or before I turn the mic over, I just wanted to, I, I have no mayor, how this is supposed to go, so I didn't know if he would have the opportunity to speak, or if it was just...
He will.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
I'm really just listening. I, I just felt like that was something that needed to be...
Thank you. And I will point out that before the next election, we'll have a whopping eight meetings. So we won't be asking to attend 99 meetings, just eight until we can have an election where Ward Two will fully get there, say. Are there any other comments?
Councilmember Nash has a follow-up, I believe.
Just real quick, another couple of facts, and out to his credit, only three of those is tardy. The other 33 were absent. But that was more than all of the other wards, including the mayor, combined.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. I believe Mr. Carter did mention why, but I appreciate that detail. Any other questions or comments from council?
Councilmember Hall, then.
Thank you. I don't think I could really say it any better than Councilmember Hall at this time. I agree, this is not circumstance any of us asked for or would want to have to deal with. I'm sure not many people in Norman right now would want to be sitting in this seat having to make this decision. I agree with Councilmember Nash about his concerns. You know, attendance is very important. I've never missed a meeting in almost eight years. I've never missed a voting meeting. I've missed a committee meeting before, but I've never had, I've never missed a city council meeting. And so I take it really seriously. I really enjoyed my time serving with Councilmember Carter. I know that he has the intelligence and the ability to do the work and has done some very good things policy-wise when he was with us. And so I, like I said, agree with Councilmember Hall. I do want to make sure that Ward Two residents know that the person we appoint is going to be there for them during the time that they are in the office, however long it is. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
And Councilmember Bierman.
So I have been reached out to a lot about this since Saturday, when I read about it in the newspaper, because I hadn't had a chance to open my agenda yet. And I, I wish that we hadn't gotten to this place. I feel like it's been a really messy process to get here, and it's going to be really messy to wrap it up. But, you know, as it comes in, so it goes out. At least, it's consistent. I had the pleasure of sitting next to Joe, literally. I suspect that I was probably one of the ones who advised him after his exposure to COVID, did not come to the council meeting, since I do sit right next to him. But I, I really enjoyed serving with Joe. I like, I like Joe. The policy positions that he left unfinished are ones that I am currently trying to move forward right now. But I do agree that these next eight weeks, we're going to have a lot of really difficult things to address. And I do believe that some of the other applicants were also extremely capable of serving in that role. I think that even a non-applicant who has expressed interest in this seat would have been more than capable of filling that role. But this is where we are, and I really don't like having these fights on the dais, but what I dislike even more is doing it twice. So this is where we are, and I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for Joe. It is not my ideal, not because of Joe, or who he is, or what his policy positions are, but because of how we got here. But I will be voting to support Joe tonight, because we need to wrap this up, we need to put this to bed, and we need to move on. And Ward Two deserves to be represented in those ongoing discussions and decisions that we have to make. And so, Joe, it looks like I won't be physically sitting next to you for maybe the entire time that you're back on council. But I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you on the very important things that we've got going on in Oversight Committee, so that's where I'm at with it. I'm sure there'll be lots of other things to fight about later tonight. This is not one that I want to fight on.
I prefer constructive dialogue as opposed to fighting, but thank you, Councilmember Bierman.
Whatever terminology.
That's right. But I, I do think it is important to move forward, and I appreciate everyone's support as we address this. And I appreciate everyone's concern. As Councilmember Hall mentioned, this is the fourth time. It's hard enough to do it once, but I'm sure every single council member here is committed to standardizing this process, because I do believe that the Citizen Committee is important and incredibly helpful. But if you would have told me four times, I would have standardized it from the beginning. But we can't foresee all of these things happening, but we can fix it and leave it better for the next council to address. So are there any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Seeing none.
All right. With that, let's, excuse me. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Okay, the motion on the floor is to appoint Joe Carter to fill the council vacancy in Ward Two. Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The appointment is approved by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would now like to recognize Judge David Porch to administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect Carter.
Dr. Carter, if you would join me by raising your right hand and repeating after me. I, Joe Carter, do solemnly swear...
Fail your meeting, sir.
I, Joe Carter, do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
And I will not knowingly receive...
Directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance...
Of any act or duty...
Of any act or duty...
Pertaining to my office...
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
As council member to the best of my ability.
As council member to the best of my ability.
I declare you duly sworn in, seated to the office of council member of the city of Norman. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Porch. And Councilmembers Bierman and Petron, you will have the opportunity to sit next to Councilmember Carter. It's my understanding we will be returning to City Hall in mid-November, because the legislature will not be going back into a special session to allow us to extend that until February. So there's your heads up on that, and I'm sure we will talk more about that at the retreat. The fun just keeps on going, friends. All right. Item five, approval of city council special session minutes of September 22nd, 2020, and city council, Norman Utilities Authority, or municipal authority, and Norman Tax, Increment, Finance Authority minutes of September 22nd, 2020. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Minutes were approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item six, proclamation 2021-7, proclaiming Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, as Paint the Town Pink Day. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the proclamation is acknowledged and approved unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, as Paint the Town Pink Day in the city of Norman. Whereas approximately 1.8 million new cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States in 2020. And whereas lung cancer is the most prevalent cancer in Oklahoma, and breast cancer is the most common cancer for women. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates 20,530 Oklahomans will be diagnosed with cancer in 2020, and 8,420 will die. And whereas research has shown that taking advantage of early detection methods such as regular checkups, mammography, and lung screenings can help drop the cancer rate by as much as 30%. And whereas Norman Regional Health Systems Paint the Town Pink Initiative will raise awareness of the importance of cancer prevention, detection, and treatment. And whereas the goal is to encourage everyone to learn their family history and risk factors for all women age 40 and older to have their annual mammogram, and raise money to provide services and support to those in our community. And now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, as Pink Out Day in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and encourage all residents to help raise awareness about cancer by wearing pink and supporting the Paint the Town Pink initiative. I would now like to recognize Trish Crowe here on the Zoom call from the Norman Regional Foundation.
Mayor Clark, I believe that I may have gotten the name wrong. We do have someone with us from the foundation. Is that Kristen?
Yeah, it's me. It's Dr. Thorpe. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Dr. Thorpe, take it away.
Thank you, my apologies.
No, absolutely. Erin and Trish couldn't be here tonight, so I'm so pleased, and thank you so much for the proclamation. We wanted to stress, take this opportunity to stress the importance of keeping annual checkups and screenings. Norman Regional has special initiatives in place to keep people safe during the pandemic, and we know that there are a lot of people delaying their screenings right now, so it's very important to get that in. Paint the Town Pink raises funds to support comprehensive cancer services at Norman Regional and assist patients with items such as complimentary bras, prosthesis, head coverings, overnight stays, and transportation, when those things may be an obstacle to their cancer care. And we look forward to the community wearing pink next Tuesday in support of cancer patients who are battling the disease, some of those who are no longer with us and some who are in remission. And we thank you very much for recognizing the effort this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Thorpe. And I will second your message of please take care of your regular health maintenance, if you will, be it screenings, and mammograms, and vaccines, because I know it's a little anxiety to get out and take care of that, but that is exactly what we need to be doing in a pandemic, is continuing to take care of our regular healthcare. So thank you, Dr. Thorpe, for joining us, and we'll make sure you get a copy of that proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Item seven, proclamation 2021-8, proclaiming October 2020 as Code Compliance Month. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman? I don't see her. Come back, there. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash? Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I'm going to declare that unanimous with Councilmember Bierman having stepped away from that vote.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2020 as Code Compliance Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Code Compliance Officers provide for safety and welfare of the citizens in the city of Norman through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas Code Compliance Officers often have a challenging and demanding role, and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses. And whereas the city of Norman Code Compliance Officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance code ordinances. And whereas there is a total of 90 years' worth of code experience in the city of Norman Code Compliance Division, and four of the city's officers have been named Oklahoma Code Enforcement Officer of the Year. Janita Hatley, 2004, Kelvin Winter, 2006, Barbara Burlingame, 2008, and Joe Shire, 2014. And whereas the city of Norman Code Compliance Officers have been very active in the Oklahoma Code Enforcement Association, and have held numerous offices in the state organization since its inception in 1994. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses. And now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby declare the month of October 2020 as Code Compliance Month in the city of Norman. I'd now like to recognize Kelvin Winter, Code Compliance Supervisor here on the Zoom call.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that proclamation, and we have a very hard-working team, and we're diligent, and, you know, your support is what helps us do this job, and we really appreciate the support. Thank you.
We appreciate all that you do, and I believe lately we've asked a little bit more of you, so we appreciate all the things that you do in normal times and as well in extraordinary times. All right. We'll now move on to item eight, which is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routinely-agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items nine through 38 on the consent docket.
Motion. So moved. Second.
All right. The motion on the floor is to place items nine through 38 on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Hi, and sorry, all, I had a kiddo going off the rails, and I needed to intervene for a second a minute ago. That's why I bounced.
Councilmember Carter?
Okay, come back to him.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock? Councilmember Carter? Go ahead, Councilmember Carter, your mic's on.
I don't know if he can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Aye.
Okay. And Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion to place items nine through 38 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item nine, 2021-4, upon first reading, adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the University North Park Business Improvement District, the time in terms of payment of assessments and expense, fixing penalties for delinquent payment, setting the tracks of land which assessment are being adopted, directing the city clerk to sign, attest, and record with the Cleveland County Clerk following passage of payment deadline, and claim of lien for unpaid amount. Item 10, 2021-9, upon first reading, amending the planned unit development, PUD, established in ordinance 0910-17 as amended by ordinance 1516-36, for property located on the northwest corner of Tecumseh Road and 12th Avenue Northwest. Item 11, 2021-16, upon first reading, 34th Street Partners LLC requests the petition for detachment for approximately 42.83 acres located on the south side of the West Bethel Road, southwest 34th Street on the west side of the railroad tracks. Item 11A, appointment of Mitch Baroff as an alternate member of the Center City Form-Based Code Review Committee. Item 12, submission of the Norman Forward Financial Oversight Board Annual Report from July 1, 2020 through September 30, 2020. Item 13, bid and contract with... Item thirteen, bid and contract with Precision Conco Company of Oklahoma LLC in the amount of forty one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents and associated bonds for the F Y E twenty twenty one sidewalk horizontal saw cutting project. Item fourteen, bid and contract with Flint Co. LLC in the amount of eight million six hundred and forty eight thousand dollars and associated bonds for the North Base Complex Project Phase One. Item fifteen, bid and contract with W E B Construction Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars and associated bonds for the relocation of water lines associated with the Thirty Sixth Avenue Northwest Phase One Waterline Relocation Project located between Tecumseh Road and Franklin Road. Item sixteen, authorization to purchase a technical fire rescue vehicle from Pierce Manufacturing through Conrad Fire Equipment in the amount of four hundred and two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents utilizing the Houston Galveston area contract. Item seventeen, submission and acknowledgement of receipt of Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Waterline Permit, W L zero 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 one four two zero zero three zero two for the Interstate Drive Waterline Replacement Project from Northwest Boulevard to River Oaks Drive. Item eighteen, final plot for Bellatona Edition Section Three generally located on the north side of State Highway Nine and east of Thirty Sixth Avenue Southeast. Item nineteen, final plot for Eagle Cliff South Edition Section Seven generally located one half mile south of Cedar Lane Road and one quarter mile west of Twelfth Avenue Southeast. Item twenty, final plot for On Q Number One Thirty Eight Edition generally located at the northwest corner of Claussen Boulevard, Highway seventy seven and Highway Nine. Item twenty one, amended consent to encroach for Lot Eleven Block One Brookhaven Number Twenty Five Edition, thirty seven oh one Hidden Hill Road. Item twenty two, special claims submitted by Marsha Hoskinson in the agreed amount of one thousand seven hundred and forty one dollars and fifty four cents for damage to her vehicle when it was struck by a sanitation department trash truck on July fifteenth, twenty twenty near twelve fifty one Alameda Street. Item twenty three, consideration of payment of quality jobs incentive to the Norman Economic Development Coalition in accordance with contract thirteen fourteen dash one oh six, University North Park TIF Development Agreement Number Six as amended. Item twenty four, change order number two to the contract with Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated for the Urban Asphalt Pavement Rehabilitation Capital Improvement Project Number One, F Y E twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty five, change order number one to the contract with Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated for the Urban Asphalt Pavement Rehabilitation Capital Improvement Project Number Two, F Y E twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty six, final acceptance and final payment of contract nineteen twenty dash ninety with Streets LLC for the emergency replacement of the heating and air conditioning system at the Animal Welfare Center. Item twenty seven, change order number one to the contract with Rudy Construction Company for the Alley Reconstruction Project, Macy Street to Emmeline Street and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty eight, contract with Freeze and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for the Lake Thunderbird Total Maxwell Daily Load, T M D L, monitoring data analysis and compliance and monitoring plan update. Item twenty nine, contract twenty twenty one dash fifty seven, a public transit revolving fund agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation distributing a maximum amount of funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty four thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars in one billing payable on or after November first, twenty twenty, such funds to be used for establishing, expanding, improving and maintaining the city of Norman's urban public mass transportation services. Item thirty, contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments for the collection of traffic data. Item thirty one, resolution prohibiting on-street parking on the east side of the thirteen hundred block of Lincoln Avenue between Lindsay Street and Farmer Street. Item thirty two, year-end closeout resolution appropriating one million nine hundred and forty three thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars from Federal Transit Administration grant revenue, two million twenty eight thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars from the Community Development Block Grant Fund Disaster Recovery Grant Revenue and three thousand thirty five dollars from the Sewer Maintenance Fund balance to close out year-end accounting entries for F Y E twenty twenty. Item thirty three, resolution granting an exemption to Resolution fifteen sixteen dash ninety four to allow for a private driveway maintained by property owners located two thousand thirty feet west of one hundred and fifty sixth Avenue Southeast on the north side of Imhoff Road. Item thirty four, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey, twenty twenty one dash three for Perry Creek Ranch generally located on the north side of East Imhoff Road approximately two thousand thirty feet west of one hundred and fifty sixth Avenue Southeast. Item thirty five, resolution adopting a public transportation agency safety plan and authorizing the city manager or his designees to implement the plan. Item thirty six, a resolution programming for, a resolution programming resolution for federal funds requests for Gray Street two-way conversion. Item thirty seven, resolution appropriating twenty seven thousand three hundred dollars from the seizure fund balance to provide funding for year three of the Axon Technology Assurance Plan under contract eighteen nineteen dash fifty seven. Item thirty eight, resolution acknowledging receipt of the assessment role and assessment plat for the University North Park Business Improvement District and instructing the city clerk to give notice of a hearing on the proposed assessment role. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
We have a couple, Mayor. Councilmember Petron?
Ms. Walker, I was hoping that you could talk to us to start off with item number twenty three. N E D C's quality jobs incentive. Just so the public understands what's happening here. Did N E D C bring those jobs to ME or does ME go and get those jobs themselves? ME earned the incentive under an agreement that was entered into, I believe, in twenty fourteen between the city, N E D C and ME. ME received a discounted price on the cost of land in the Corporate Center or Advanced Manufacturing Center of the N E D C. And exchange for that, they assigned their any quality job incentives they earned to N E D C up to the amount of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars total. Those things get funded from TIF revenues and that was part of the twenty nineteen project plan amendments that was preserved when the project plan was amended and it's also included in the amended and restated master agreement. Okay, and the ten years, it's a program that's ten years long, right? Correct. And not from, is that from twenty fourteen or is that from the beginning at the TIF from two thousand six? Like, how long, when is the expiration of the ten years? The first year, we figured the incentive, I believe, was twenty fourteen, so it'd be ten years beginning then. We compare it to the baseline number of jobs that they had in twenty thirteen and determine how many new jobs they've created as well as how many jobs they've created that pay the qualifying wage. And that's how the incentive gets determined. Okay, and does, is it, I remember the baseline number of twenty three or twenty nine or something, but with each year that they're eligible for the incentive on the job, do you calculate that same newly created job as a newly created job again year after year? Or is it like this year they have fifty jobs, so this will be the baseline and they need to continue to grow jobs to be eligible for that? Or is it you need to continue to keep those people employed? Both. The baseline is always going to be those twenty thirteen job numbers per the development agreement. So it both ensures that, you know, the quality jobs incentive is paid for any new jobs after that. The amount grows as they continue to add new jobs or keep the jobs that they've, that they've created.
That's where we can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. I don't know why. So I guess what my question would be, is it that like they got an incentive for job X last year that was a newly added job? Is this year, is it still considered a newly added job if it's over above the twenty three? So it's, it continues to pay a incentive year after year for the ten, ten years of the program? That's correct. The baseline is always going to be the twenty nine jobs that were there in twenty thirteen. Okay. And I think that that's, and you said that the cap's at seven hundred and seventy thousand is the most that they can take in total? Correct. Over the ten years cumulative. Okay. All right. All right. That's all I wanted to get out on the record. Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman?
So I have a couple small questions. One of mine was actually about ME, so that one was addressed. Can, I guess it would probably be Chief Foster, maybe clarify number twenty six, the final payment for emergency replacement of the HVAC system at Norman Animal Welfare. Is this tied to the budget line item that we approved in last year's budget for the replacement of this system and to get it coded?
Yes, that's, that's a new system. You, you know, will still have to look at maintenance in the future, but this is the sign off on the install and it's all completed and checked off on.
This is the system that was sent down to, I think it was a company in Texas to get it coded against corrosion. So hopefully we won't have this problem. Okay.
Yeah.
I was just, I was just confused because it said emergency replacement. And so I'm thinking like, is this a second one that we're replacing? So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. But stay here. Can you talk to me a little bit about item number thirty seven? Excuse me, the TASER replacement program?
Yeah.
So we can get, I know that we, we emailed about this back and forth, but I wanted to make sure that some of this information gets into the public discourse as well and not just me sharing emails.
This was a contract we did a couple of years ago with TASER that went over five years. Initially, we paid them a hundred and some thousand, and then we was paying twenty seven thousand three hundred over the next four years for replacement of all the TASERS because things were going obsolete and we couldn't get maintenance on the current ones. Chief Humphrey at the time accepted that contract and we brought it to council back then to be paid from seizure and we set those funds aside in our seizure account to do this. It's just that every year when this comes back, we have to bring it to council yearly to get it allocated from that account.
So this was a little bit of a surprise to me because obviously I was on council in twenty eighteen and this didn't make so much of a ripple, let alone anything larger than that, which partly speaks to my evolution on these topics. And I did not make a request to pull this off consent because I simply wanted to make a point for next year and maybe for our council discussions at the retreat this weekend. Several of us, and it seems like a growing number, are growing uncomfortable with the use of civil asset forfeiture money for any purchase at all. And so again, I wasn't willing to pull this off consent to talk about whether or not we wanted to continue using civil asset forfeiture money for this contract because we did approve it on the consent docket last November, also with hardly even a ripple. But I think that this is a worthwhile discussion for us to have as a council body at the retreat and then to discuss moving forward how, if at all, we are comfortable using civil asset forfeiture money for these kinds of purchases or for any purchases, because it was only a month or so ago that we asked the police department to find a different source of funding for cell phones. And I will say that I recognize that improperly maintained or malfunctioning TASERS are definitely a worst case scenario for me. And this is not something that I want to postpone us replacing equipment that is so out of date that it can't be maintained and therefore might malfunction. But I do think that this is a conversation we need to have formally as a council body at our retreat about whether or not we are comfortable using civil asset forfeiture money at all. So thank you, Chief. I appreciate the information. Thank you for responding to my email. It helped me get a little bit of information out to people who asked me about it and just wanted to make sure that we got it out in this public of a forum as we have right now. So thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
You're muted.
I just had similar questions that my colleagues have asked. I don't recall this being on a consent agenda before for a seizure fund purchase that I would have voted for. But I do, so I agree that the contract for a number of years, having some exact history of it and how we voted. I agree with Councilmember Beerman, faulty equipment, things like that, it's not something. So maybe I hear like a feedback.
Your mic's the only one hot.
Okay. That, having that stuff, having, having faulty equipment's not good. Replacing it is fine. But I do want to continue looking at other revenue or other budget options to accomplish those needs. And I did not unfortunately pull it off either. So I'm probably going to vote against the consent docket tonight. I don't necessarily encourage you to do the same. It's my fault. I missed it and didn't pull it off. But I do want to continue to make that known to staff, future agendas. I personally do not want to see seizure fund items on a consent docket ever again. I really don't want to ever see it on the city council agenda ever again. Would be my goal. But I think that's something council need to continue having discussions about going forward. So that's my thoughts on that. I do appreciate the explanation for what it is intended for, because I did get a lot of questions about that. So I appreciate that. My other thing was ME. I want to just give some background a little bit on that since I was on council and that was approved. If I recall, that's really the only jobs incentive program that council has approved during the time that I've been on council. And the intent was to retain an existing Norman business that was founded by Norman residents and where most of the employees lived in Norman. And we wanted to keep that in Norman and council at the time felt that the existing U M P TIF two thousand and six deal and incentive, jobs incentive money, that that was basically, that was a worthy use of it to retain an existing company. One that is especially as unique as ME is when it comes to the work they do. So that is just kind of what the council was thinking about then and why we set the threshold about the number of jobs and the type of benefits and salary that those jobs would need to have accompanied them as well. So just wanted to offer a little bit of background on the ME. So that's my only comments or questions about the consent docket. Thank you.
Councilmember Petron?
Just as a related point of information, can Mr. Francisco tell us what the balance of the federal seizure account is as well as the state one? I think we, I don't think we budgeted anything on the state seizure accounts. That should be zero, right?
Well, I'm looking for the answer to your question in general.
Keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, council did not budget for any expenditures out of the seizures fund this year and that was for the first time that you had done that. Usually this item would have been budgeted for and would not have required a separate council appropriation.
Could I follow up? Councilman Petron, may I interrupt you?
Sure.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, is that, so in my, I'm not being crazy then that council hasn't specifically voted on this line item before that because it was built into the budget. So that's why, okay. Because I was sitting here thinking, I know I didn't vote for this before, at least as a line item like this. So anyway, thank you. I appreciate you asking.
It was built into the budget as a seizure expense.
Right. It's the overall budget that we would.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
So as of the end of September, the federal portion had four hundred and ninety nine thousand six hundred and two dollars and ninety one cents and the state portion had forty four thousand eleven dollars and forty nine cents.
Okay. And then only the Chief, do you know which portion of the state is the one that has not been adjudicated? Federal has?
Yeah, federal is normally adjudicated before they do the seizure, you know, before it's finished up. State, not necessarily, there's not necessarily conviction or adjudication.
Okay. All right. I think I would like to probably have that conversation at the retreat as well as what we want to do going forward with this.
You know, other comments, Mayor?
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'll also point out that with item 14, those were bids on the transit and parks maintenance facilities on North Base and they did come in quite low. So that is exactly what we wanted. And what we were saying was going to happen and why you invest in a pandemic. So well done on that. All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
No.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket is approved by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one item off consent tonight, which is item 39. A public hearing regarding acceptance of a grant in the amount of $26,226 to the city of Norman and Cleveland County from the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance with Norman's portion of $23,603 to be used by the Norman Police Department for purchasing crowd control equipment, software and audio visual equipment. I'll entertain a motion to conduct a public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to conduct a public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd now like to recognize John Steggi to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me? Am I off mute?
Yes.
Never know. What I'm gonna, what I'd like to do is give a short PowerPoint presentation about the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant. I hope my, I hope the PowerPoint is, is showing up. Is that what's on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. 2020 Justice Assistance Grant, just a little bit of background. This is the Edward Byrne Grant. It comes out each year. It's provided to states, local units of government based on population and crime statistics. This is a formula grant that allows funds to be used for a broad range of programs, any with very, well, with very broad focuses on reducing crime and violence. And this year's allocation for the city of Norman is $26,226. This is a grant that although we apply for it, as I said before, it's a formula grant. And so therefore the allocations made, we're, we're, we're provided notice that we've gotten. We have an allocation and all we do is apply for it. And as long as we're within the rules of the application, then the grant is awarded. There are four programs within the grant this year that, that staff is asked to move forward with. The first one is personal protective equipment for crowd management. The second is web-based analytical software for the police data initiative data sets on our, our, our departmental website. The third is upgrades to the audio visual components of the chief's conference room or the executive conference room here at the police department, which has kind of become a pretty important thing with the pandemic and a lot of video conferencing. And then the final thing is a required pass through. We have to share as a disparate entity, some of the funding with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office as a condition of the grant. A little bit more specific for the equipment. Part of our, our request or the grant, we have an interactive whiteboard for the chief's conference room. Shipping costs on, on the personal protective equipment for crowd management gear, batons, protective shields, helmets and suits. All of that totals up to just over $15,000. The pass through portion, the part that goes to Cleveland County would be approximately 10% of the grant, total grant award. At 20, just over $2,600. And then contracts that we would be looking at or subscriptions and training, we're looking at a software called Tableau. It's used to have a graphical interface for data sets. So you actually get to look at pie charts and you can interact with those things. It's web-based. The intention is that both internal and external users could then look at our data sets. And instead of looking at a spreadsheet, you're actually looking at pie charts, bar charts and other things and clicking on different segments to narrow down what information you're looking for. We're looking for training so that we can figure out how to upload the information, how to develop charts and graphs that people can then interact with and manipulate. And then we're also looking at training. So crowd management training from a command level down to the line level. The total cost of that is just over $8,300. That is pretty much the short and sweet of this grant. More than happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. When you said it's a, it's a grant that you, we always apply for, correct?
Well, yes, ma'am. We, it, it, again, it's a formula grant, which means population and crime statistics. The Department of Justice makes an announcement that says the, the grants are out. And here's how much your allocation is based on this formula city of Norman. We need you to apply so that you can then receive this funding.
And did you have to specify what the funding would go towards when you applied?
Yes, ma'am. Those things that I just put up there were from the budget detail worksheet that went forward with the grant application.
And so how did we identify that need within the police department?
That was done through the executive staff is the one that I get my direction from.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council?
Councilmember Peacock?
Oh yeah, thank you. In terms of project two, the analytical software, what would be the timeline for getting that up and running?
Well, probably before the end of the year. Most of that would be around the start of, of the year to actually get the data sets built and, and understanding of, a deeper understanding of how the software works. We've played with, with one of our data sets and it's very user friendly. But the building of the charts is a process that takes a little bit of time, a little bit of experimentation, build, then have critique and then build again and adjust.
Okay. And would there be any kind of, you know, public report or anything generated from software that could be available for mass consumption on, either on like a monthly or a biannual basis or anything like that?
There's, we are talking at the police department about developing an annual report and quarterly report. That's kind of a separate thing. One of the things about the public data initiative is that the data is supposed to go out in a raw format, unchewed up, unanalyzed by us, allowing the users to actually, actually develop their own reports. What this software does, it doesn't actually change any data, data sets. It just displays it in graphs. And people can simply click on the areas they're interested in and, and it filters the information. But it doesn't change the data. So basically it allows users to, to analyze on their own.
Okay.
I hope that answers it.
No, no, definitely. I'm just really interested in seeing this data for myself. And I know a lot of other people are. So I just, as soon as it's accessible, I'd love to see it. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Beerman?
So I have a couple of questions about, about this. Some of, some of them are a little nippy, but my first question is, when did we apply for this grant? This particular one?
The application, we submitted the application. It would have been, gosh, hold on a second. I'm looking for the actual date.
I looked through all the documentation. If it was available in what I was given, I'm sorry I missed it. So.
August 19th.
August 19th. Okay. So that was a fast turnaround. And the reason I ask is I'm a little concerned with the language in the staff report about why this is necessary. Because as we went through the budget discussions in June and talking about the police department budget, it was the, it was the feeling I got that the response from the police department was, we are not Kenosha. We are not Ferguson PD. We are not St. Louis. We're not LA. We're not NYPD. We're not any of these other departments where these tragic situations have occurred. We are Norman. And we pride ourselves on doing things the best way we possibly can. And while I understand that, and in a lot of ways I agree, the language included in the staff report basically indicates violence happening elsewhere means we need to be prepared for violence here. Which is a little bit different than the perspective we were trying to share as council members back in June by saying, these things are happening elsewhere. We don't want them to happen here. And the response was, it won't happen here because this is Norman, not those other cities. And so I kind of feel that there's an imbalance here that the, some of the changes we were looking at making, we were told we don't need to make them here because we're not these other cities. Yet here we are being faced with an ask for crowd control equipment based on what's happening in other jurisdictions. We haven't had any violent protests here, have we?
We haven't had any violent protest here and hopefully we won't. But the possibility is there. And particularly with warnings that we're getting on election day coming up, it's a large possibility. And don't just think about one side of this and the protests coming from one area. This could be right or left as far as political views go on what the protests may come and what violence may start. So we want to be prepared to deal with it ourselves. On those past protests, we have had what we would call a field force unit, a riot unit like this that's equipped with these things available to us from another jurisdiction. And I would like to have our own that I have more control over what they do and how they do it, rather than depending on another jurisdiction to come in and handle things for us.
And I, and I completely, I completely agree with that perspective. My concern is either we're going to be taking all of the preventative actions that we can, which includes on the police side and on the public facing side. Or we are unique and different and do things better and are more peaceful. And I just feel like we can't do it both ways. It can't be, we don't need to make any substantive changes within the department because we're not these other cities. But also we need to prepare for the possibility of violence because our residents, this might end up happening. So I just want some consistency in how we address this. And I don't, I don't really feel like we're getting it. And those were the first comments that came to me were, why do we need this? Because we were told that we don't need to make any changes in how our police department operates because we're not these other cities. Yet we're being looked at as if we have the propensity for violence that some of these other communities have. So I just, I, I just needed to get that out there because I do feel that discrepancy. And I don't necessarily think that these are the worst possible tools. I would much rather see shields and shin guards than beanbag guns and tear gas dispensers. So I definitely think we're headed in the right direction with what, with what you're looking at. And I don't disagree. I just, I, I am worried about this change in perspective. Because I do believe that we're just one tragic incident away from being Kenosha. I have no doubt that the residents of Kenosha and the police department in Kenosha never thought that that would happen there. But it did. And so I think if we're going to have that perspective, we need to have that perspective broadly. But I do have, I do have a specific question about these JAG grants. There are some very interesting provisions included in these that are somewhat recent in terms of being responsive to DHS and ICE. And so what do you know about these conditions in these burn JAG grants? And is that at all going to impact how you're able to operate? Because as we have also seen when we went round and around on the sanctuary city topic, we don't have too much interaction with ICE. We're not extremely proactive in checking immigration status, et cetera. And I'm curious, because these conditions I believe were added just in the last year or so. So this might not be something that has been on our radar if we've been applying for these types of grants for a long time.
And my guess is, Your Honor, that those rules and parameters are set out for all the agencies, including sheriff's offices who operate jails where most of that interaction with ICE takes place. Really doesn't happen on the police side at all. I'm not aware of a police department that checks immigration status as part of anything they do in police matters. Typically when an individual is arrested and they are remanded to the sheriff for jail custody, that's when those activities typically take place. So I think it's one set of rules for all the public safety agencies. Some are applicable on the city side and others are applicable on the county side.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I'm going to turn it over to everyone else. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
All right. So I, yeah, I see this kind of as a grant more of opportunity than out of necessity or need. I know that we have a kind of an aging armory full of riot gear and equipment. And, you know, I can appreciate that when you know, the assistance in helping law enforcement do their job in crowd crowd safety. You know, if officers feel vulnerable and threatened, that's when force has to escalate. Giving them old equipment is going to make them feel vulnerable in scenarios where they naturally feel threatened. However, there's a couple of things on the, the worksheet you're, that, from the PowerPoint, it seemed a little consistent with the staff report that I'd like to clear up. One of them being the, the data software, the Tableau software, which I see that as being under project number two in the staff report. But the budget items just include teleconferencing equipment and, and software. And I don't see any of the, the data presentation or availability software. And also on the equipment list in the PowerPoint, it included an item for shields, which isn't in the project number one list of equipment. If you can clear up the discrepancies.
Chief, would you like for me to try to take that?
Yeah, go ahead.
It gets a little confusing even for me when, when we're trying to translate equipment and, and training and those kinds of things to account names and account numbers. And so you don't necessarily get a one for one exchange of, for example, telecommunications software, the Tableau, there's not an actual account for that. It might be lumped in with the white, the, 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 the other general software account. And so when you're talking about the teleconferencing software, that includes the Tableau equipment in there. And so when you're talking about the teleconferencing software, that includes the Tableau equipment in there. And it would also include, I believe, I, I don't know why it would include the training as well, but I, it would, it looks like it was lumped in with the training as well. Yes.
Well, in the presentation, the training was 5,000, and it's 5,000 here on the, on the staff report as well.
I apologize for that. The training in the staff report for 5,000 is for crowd control, crowd management training for how to do that. There, the Tableau, we also have to get trained upon, and that's part of the subscription price, is to get certi-, not certification, but to, to go through the training on how to use the program, how to develop this, the charts, the graphs, and things of that nature.
Yeah. What about the shields?
Shields would just be part of the protective equipment under item two of the recommendation number three.
That 12,849?
Yes, it's part of that. All of the, all of the shields, the shin guards, the, all of that stuff is part of that.
All right. The item in the presentation was 15,000 something.
That's because it included the whiteboard as well, which is part of a different project. So it, it comes out of the same account, but it goes to a different part of this grant.
Okay, that's not going to cause any problems down the road, is it?
No, sir. It's something I have to track with all my grants or things like that. They have the sub-elements in them.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Councilmember Petrow.
Kate, I had some of the same questions that you did when I read through on the special conditions of each of these. I would like to hear from our city attorney on our relationship at that point with, and it's not just DHS, ICE, although that's probably about seven or eight pages worth of special conditions of a relationship that this would create. It's more than just that. I mean, there are all, all different kinds of new, new relationships that would come with strings attached. And I would like to hear for I would be comfortable with our PD having to be required and not be paid to do another agency's work. We're already trying to live within our means, and it's not easy. So I would like to get a legal opinion after she's had an opportunity to go through these as well as, you know, working with the DNA collection and CODIS. I know that we haven't asked particularly in any of these specific items that we're going to be doing. However, I did find it interesting that perhaps, don't we have a bunch of rape kits that are outstanding that could potentially be used? I thought maybe we could, you know, sent to, for collection. Anyway, there are many, many different parts of that report and special conditions that I think warrant taking a really good look at because I'm not sure that that's what our PD has done in the past. But going through these, so I'd like to hear on the obligations that we're required to on that. Background checks was another thing that these funds were allowed to be used on. Do we have a picture of what these would look like? What does this protective suit and gear, what, what is it that we're trying to buy?
I don't have a picture, but it is, you know, the padding for the officers, shin guards, the helmet, shields. I don't have a picture, though, of it, of what it looks like. And we haven't narrowed it down to a particular person until we go to purchase it.
So you mean a particular vendor?
Yeah, vendor. I'm sorry.
Is it just kind of like a ballpark figure of what you think it's going to cost?
Yes.
So well before any recent events, unless you want to consider the Bearcat conversation a recent event. In this topic that I want to talk about is demilitarization. This has been something that we didn't have a big controversy in the city as far as politically, one side versus the other. It was actually a uniting topic that people didn't want to feel like their neighborhood policing was looking so scary, if you will. And so I know that this feels like a circular conversation or chicken in the egg, and it's not a matter of if, but when, and all that kind of thing. But equally true, and perhaps many, many studies suggest that maybe one of the reasons why we've been able to keep the temperature dialed down is because our police don't come off as threatening in that right-to-protest situation. So they were constitutionally protected protests. They didn't have any violence at all. I don't even think we had any, to my knowledge, there was nothing. And I actually, at the time, was commending our officers for showing up in polos and khakis and speaking even at those events. I feel like when we show up in a presence like this, and I'm just, that's why I asked for a picture, because what I'm picturing in my head is what we've been seeing on TV. And it's these huge shields, one person to the next, that you've made this like plexiglass barrier between you and the people that are crying out for justice. It creates a power imbalance between the person exercising their constitutional rights and the authorities. And so we're not listening anymore at that point, but more creating an adversarial relationship. And it makes me wonder if, you know, we saw that the police in Oklahoma City were in all of that. And lo and behold, they had violence that took place. Whereas you all were, yeah, I'm here, where one of you were, were walking amongst you, and we're not all garbed out. And it didn't create an adversarial relationship, and they were able to express their constitutional rights and nothing happens. I'm not naive enough to think that nothing can ever happen. I don't want you to think that, Chief, that I'm like, don't see, and in fact, I'm actually more concerned that we're not ordering the type of equipment that I see as the threats that are happening around the United States right now, which is, to me, would, maybe you need bulletproof vests because you'd be shot at. But, um, and you know, very much like what we're, Tulsa, just this very last weekend, had militia in the streets. Armed militia. So the same argument can be made that they're expressing their constitutional rights. Well, if you were in this, if you meet them in the streets in this, is that going to create an adversary relationship at that point, too, because there wasn't a shot fired in Tulsa? And, you know, I, I think that there's a philosophical discussion that, that takes place here that it's not just dollars and cents. And not to mention all of the other details that we were talking about before of what kind of strings are attached with this that we're going to have to be reporting to the feds over. And background checks potentially, and that's a whole other can of worms that I'm not sure that people are real excited had that discussion either. Um, and then I think the timing on this, especially, I had the same question. It's, when did we apply for this? It feels very punitive that perhaps the people that are asking for change that two months later, instead of, we're seeing again a violence-free situation. Well, not everybody's going to be happy, and that's just kind of the nature of deliberations. That's, the mayor called earlier, if this isn't arguing, this is exchange of ideas. This is the American way. But instead, now it shows up on our agenda of, now we want riot gear. We didn't have any riots. And I don't want any riots. I don't want to send that message that if you come into our city hall and want changes, whether you're, whatever side of the aisle you might be on, that you're going to be met with the pendulum swinging so far the opposite direction a couple of months later on our agenda. I, I just, I'm not against a whole lot of the things on this list as far as you need electronic whiteboard and all that stuff. I'm just, I want to see what this looks like. And I don't know that I want to be, feel like that my community policing, my local policing, our neighborhood policing is ramping it up and ready to go to war with some people. Because that's how it feels when I watch these on TV. And that's just me being honest with you guys. And I don't know, maybe I've lived a very sheltered life. I'm willing to admit that, too. But I, I can tell you that it's, I'm not comfortable right now, and I would hope that you would be able to give us some sort of concrete reasoning as to why we need this. Because right now, all I'm seeing is it looks like some sort of combat, paramilitary.
Your Honor, you, you have identified a couple of elements, I think, exactly accurately in what you have seen in other agencies in the metro and other agencies in Oklahoma versus the approach that we take and will always take. So our, our interaction with our public, we don't anticipate any changes in that approach at all. We provide traffic control to keep everybody safe. We work closely with event organizers to make sure we understand where they're coming from, where they're headed to, to ensure all their safety. Our officers are trained differently, and they approach these issues, I think, much differently than a lot of other agencies. In the event somebody were to try to bring something dangerous to our community, we have only two choices. And choice one is, we allow our department and our officers to address the situation the way we recognize the greatest level of success, or we stand down and call for assistance from another agency. And once we make that call for assistance to another agency, we are no longer in control of that situation. And it's going to happen the way that agency trains and what their expectations are. So that's the balance, and I feel much more confident with our folks trained the way we want them to be trained to be able to respond. In our, our response, we won't change anything. But in the event there is somebody who attempts to bring harm to the folks of Norman, I, I would much rather that be handled with our people than turning the keys over to a neighboring agency and just watching the outcome on the news, just like you've expressed. That, that scares me the most.
Well, Mr. Pyle, since you brought that up, let me ask. When we've watched on the news, it was coming from the mayors to sign off on that, that it's time to get your gear on and go, get out there and stand behind your big shields. Is that what in Norman? How would that work here? Is that something that, does she say it's a state of emergency? There's too many people out there? Get suited up, guys? I mean, how would that work here?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't think that's a mayor's question, but we'll refer to the chief and the deputy chief. In, in, like I said, we don't go there very darn often, if, if ever. So that's just not anything we rehearse. But we'll ask for the chief and the deputy chief's response to that set of circumstances.
Well, I don't think it's an issue of a crowd getting big or small or large or anything else. I think it's when a crowd becomes violent and starts throwing things and damaging property and hurting people. Or that's, that's when you might need this gear and when we can make a difference with it, rather than calling somebody else. You'll, you'll have officers from around the nation that have been involved in these things. More violent areas, which we've had warnings from federal agencies about what could happen after Election Day or on Election Day. So we have some concerns of what could happen here. And if things do turn violent and things start getting thrown and things, I don't want my officers getting injured when things hit them in the head. Or, you know, if some officers around the place have been burned and other things, I just want to protect them when I send them out there to deal with those situations. And it's like the manager said, we will continue to deal with general protests and things that we've had in the past, as we have all along. We will process the intel that we get about the event and who may be there, and we'll take the appropriate precautions based on how we would do it here in Norman and how we've done it in the past, and we'll continue to do it in the future.
Well, do you know, just practically speaking, as we watch these play, these different things play out on TV, it was typically the mayors of the community that gave the, the go-ahead. How does that work here?
I would give the go-ahead on whom we needed to do something here and handle it the, the way that we have in the past. I think we have the training and the tools and the knowledge to handle whatever event may come our way. This is just some protective gear that we need to carry it out without calling somebody else in to do certain things for us if an event would turn violent.
Okay. And then one other question on strategically, this training that, that, for this particular event, should it happen, the $5,000 training side of it? How do you, how do you go about training? I mean, is there somebody that, like, is it with another community? Or how do, in another community's force? How do you set up?
We have options. We have options. We can send them to training, which we've been looking at some that's coming close to us to a benchmark city up in Kansas. And even closer than that, to save some money. And it's a group that does this training that we are very, we like very much for other training they have given us and the quality of their training. And, and we can, we, we can go with one of the other groups coming down here and training us if we wanted to save more money. Like Oklahoma City could come down here and train our guys, or do Train the Trainer, or Moore could do it. I would like to send our guys to their own Train the Trainer and us develop our own training and do it ourselves.
Okay. And at this point, I, I feel like I just probably want to hear from the public, I mean, the rest of my colleagues here, too. But I don't know, I'm not, I, I feel like the timing on this is, is I, I don't like the timing on it, but I'm going to hear from others to see if, because what I would like to see is more things coming in front of us to help bring us together. And this really feels like it's yet another divisive piece that's pulling, you know, tearing everybody apart. And I don't, I don't see the necessary need right now. But I would like to hear from maybe members of the community, because I'm open to hear.
We have other council members with their hands raised. I don't know if they have questions or want to make statements. You do have some public comments, people are ready to public, to participate in the public hearing. So how do you want to move forward?
If you have questions or a need of clarification that you think will help the public,
If you have questions or a need of clarification that you think will help the public, I would like to stick with those. Otherwise, people are here for the public hearing and council members do have another opportunity to make comments and ask questions at the end. Council reformer, and I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I would like to speak before the public if I, if I can. Okay, sorry, Stephen, I think I'm skipped every. I think I have an interesting perspective on this. Seeing as for the last seven years I've worked at a police department and so I kind of understand policing and how departments operate a little bit. I know a lot of people are very concerned that this seems like we're militarizing the police, but I really see this as equipments. You know, if you want to really dig into, I don't know Norman Police Department, I don't know how you operate, honestly. But at my agency, every officer that qualifies has an assault rifle with them in their car. They have them on bulletproof vests, they have shields and all sorts of stuff that are in the trunk of the car that never get used, but they have them in the event that they need them. So for me, this isn't tear gas, this isn't rubber bullets or anything like that. It's not weapons, it's equipment for them. And so that's, that's how I see it. I mean, we have equipment for them that they never really use, right? But it's always just in the event of, but I do have one question for Chief Foster. What would be the threshold in which you would see them like deploying this stuff? Like, I mean, if people are throwing rocks or something, that's not as bad as like if they have a crowbar or something. Like what is the threshold in which you would deploy the use of this equipment?
Well, probably even on throwing rocks, if there was a lot of that going off, if it's a single person that did something, we can probably deal with that pretty quickly depending on the size of the group that it are in. If there's a lot of people doing it, well, obviously I'd want the officers to have the helmets on and start getting protective gear on so they're not injured by anything being thrown. But I think we've used good discretion in the past on those things. And it's when that starts to turn to violence and throwing those things or damaging equipment, carrying bats, different things like that, that would worry me about sending our officers out there without protective gear.
Is there any instance other than a riot that you would see the use of this? Like something else that would happen, another event?
Not that I can think of offhand. You know, mostly we could do it in our normal uniforms and direct the crowds and like we normally have. And we work with them to get them where they need to be and what they want to do. And hopefully that would work in the future without anything turning violent. But it's like you said, they would have it available to them at their car, which would be right there if it was needed or if it turned violent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions like that before we turn it over to the public for the public hearing?
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of the concerns that have been expressed and a lot of questions that have been asked. I have down here as well. Some of the information that I'd be interested in knowing about this type of thing. I mean, I guess I should speak specifically to the crowd control gear. I do think I could absolutely agree the audio visual software is needed for sure, support that. I have some questions about the software. I had just a few questions, people asking me what type of software, like what it's used for. I've had people ask me if it's got facial recognition, any type of spyware, that type of thing, if you might speak to that because I have had a couple of people send me a message about they're not using this to spy on me or anything like that. I don't think that's, that's not what I interpreted, but.
No, nothing like that. There's nothing in this equipment that is anything like that. Or audio visual stuff, any, any part of it, none of it's like that.
Right. And the equipment, I would wonder, I guess, what cities like Norman may have this similar type of crowd control response equipment? Thinking like Boulder and Waco, perhaps Columbia, Missouri, Lawrence, Kansas, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Fayetteville, Arkansas, cities of similar size to Norman that are also college towns that can, you know, may have even a long history of, of citizens marching, protesting. You know, but I think what is most typical of college towns, it is generally peaceful protests. We don't see a lot of rioting going on. So in just a cities, you know, benchmark cities type of comparison, do we have a lot of information on cities like Norman, whose police departments do have this type of equipment?
I don't have the information and John may be able to speak to it. He does our benchmark city stuff. But I would imagine that several of them do have gear like this. Not how much they use it, probably about like we would, but I'm imagining they would have this gear.
Okay. And that is something I'd be interested in knowing more about regardless of what we do tonight. The current equipment that we do have, I mean, I've been, you know, back in that like sort of workout ballet room. I don't know, it might have used to had mirrors on it, on the walls. But last time I was in there, it was like a storage room. And yeah, like shields piled up in the corner and that type of stuff. So how long have we had that stuff and when have we used it? Because I really can't recall any time I've ever seen a Norman police officer carrying a shield or wearing a helmet, like, I mean, other than a SWAT team. But I've never seen like the helmet, I can't even recall any like old pictures either from, you know, the 60s or 70s of officers wearing any type of riot gear in Norman, like I've seen in other places. So I just kind of wondering when, how long have we had our stuff and when we might have used it ever?
That was, the equipment you saw was from probably back in the 80s. I mean, it's, those things have been here a long time, very brittle, getting very old. And that's what we're trying to replace here. And I have not seen it deployed either in large mass. Even when we had some issues back before even I was hired on campus corner that got a little out of hand. I don't ever remember the officers talking about deploying those things in those situations. And I, you know, they didn't use gas or anything like that either. But this is a different time and different things could happen, particularly with some warnings we're getting here coming forward. So hopefully nothing happens here in our community or in our state. But it is good to be prepared in case something does happen.
Okay, I appreciate that. And you mentioned the election day violence that's anticipated. I know, you know, everybody seems pretty on edge about this election that's coming up for many different reasons. Is this a normal thing though? Every presidential election, do we see a heightened sense of kind of the same situation? Maybe it's not as intense every time. But every presidential election year, do we see a heightened state of, you know, we all need to be aware, election day, there could be some unrest in some places type of situation. Is that normal?
There might be something, but it is nothing like it is now and the warnings we are getting. And the intelligence that we're being made aware of is nothing, it has been nothing like this in the past. This is different.
Okay. And if I may jump in, Councilmember Holman, to let you all know, I'm involved in a variety of mayors networks, US Conference of Mayors, Mayor's Innovation Project, Bloomberg, it's US Cities. All of them have hosted multiple webinars on preparing for potential protests and riots surrounded around election day. So I asked the same question, like, is this normal? Because I clearly haven't been mayor during a presidential election year and got a very similar response. So from my perspective, as mayor and the training they're offering to us, it seems very unique.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think, let's see, I did have some concern about the, any type of, you know, red tape from the Justice Department or the federal government requiring our local police department to do certain things. Would be some, as you mentioned, the desire to maintain local control is definitely one. I'm generally at to support in most cases. And that is one too. I, I want, I want to, I want to make sure that our police department or that our officers on patrol are not being mandated by the federal government because of this grant, that they now have to do something that is a federal law that, again, like as other council mentioned it, you know, doing some other agency's job basically and not, not being compensated for it. I just want, I, that is a concern I would have as well. And I kind of have that concern anytime we accept money from the federal government. And, you know, in our most recent transportation bond that we did last year, we included several projects in it that are locally funded entirely because we were frustrated about having to rely on the federal government for funding and the strings that came with those funds usually. So trying to do more stuff locally so we can have more local control is definitely appealing to me. So that I think is a valid concern. I did have some questions about, you know, could this grant be used for things like bulletproof vests? Do all of our officers have them? I think they all do. But are they all, you know, up to date? Do they need to be replaced? I had some people ask about, you know, could these funds be used for things like that?
Yes. These funds, they can be used for bulletproof vests, but it will mitigate other funds that you may get. And that was in all this details you're talking about here, that it could mitigate other funds that you may get. If you use this for bulletproof vests, we replace a fifth of those every year because the life on a bulletproof vest is five years. So they're replaced over, over five years, they replace all the vests. And I believe that's contractual also that they have it in the contract that will replace those.
Okay.
In that manner.
Appreciate that. Like I said, there was definitely some questions about whether it could be used for that or not. And then I definitely had a few questions about if it could be used for, you know, COVID-related protective equipment for police due to, you know, COVID currently this year being the by far number one killer of law enforcement personnel. And if this type of grant or others can be used to obtain equipment that could help police departments mitigate or address that.
That may be a question for John that he could answer better than I might be able to after. I don't remember anything in here talking about that, but there's separate grants that we get for those things. So I'm not sure, John may have a better explanation of what we could do with that.
We did receive a grant in March, a supplemental grant for COVID response that was designed specifically for prevention, response to mitigation of COVID-related incidents. That is a grant that we, that was approved, I want to say in April, accepted in April. It's still ongoing. The protective equipment involved in that, as I'm sure you can, can, would anticipate is trickling in because of the, because of the demand, quite frankly. And so there is protective equipment, but with that, we're talking about gloves, gowns, masks and things of that nature. So that, we do have funding for that from a separate grant that we are taking advantage of for protective equipment.
Okay, I appreciate that. I want to make sure people did hear that question and the answer there. And then that's all the questions I had. I would, I do have some other things to say after we hear from public about some of my thoughts on it. I would like others to think about the idea of whether, you know, crowd control use in this way is, could be considered a declaration of an emergency based on what we think would be the scenario where that would be needed. And so I think it is a valid question about in other cities, does the mayor, and in those other cities, it's probable that they have a strong mayor form of government, I would guess. Like Tulsa has, for example. But I don't know for sure, but that'd be my guess. But that is a very interesting question about use of powers, I think. And in that situation, if you have a crowd that's violent and to the size that would merit that type of response from the police, that seems like it would be a state of emergency to me. And so I would wonder from a legal opinion, maybe about the mayor or the mayor's, the mayor's designee, me being the vice mayor currently, what that could mean legally and what other cities are, how other cities address that. And I think I would like some more information about that regardless of this grant or this equipment. More clarification on, you know, the powers of the elected body when these types of situations are occurring in cities. So, thank you.
Councilmember Holman, you brought up an item, and just for my own edification, chief, when we rotate out our current vests and it's their warranty issues, et cetera, does the company take our old vests with them or do they leave their old vests with us to dispose of?
I think we keep the old vest and sometimes those are passed on to other agencies if they request them through approval here. And sometimes we use them down at the department, down at the range for training.
That, just wanted to make sure they weren't going in a landfill somewhere they should have value for some agency. Thank you.
I actually had one more that I missed right here, and that was just how many, in the event of this situation where crowd control team would be needed, how many officers would we expect that to be? And in a city this size, is our, is it practical to think that a department our size could really on its own without calling outside help, even with this gear, could handle, control a crowd of 5,000 people in a city of 125,000? And, you know, on game days, we have tens of thousands of people running around. And so that would be my question is, I would love for our police department probably to be the only, you know, responding entity and not having to have outside forces come in that are trained by other people and under the direction of other people. But I would wonder too, what is the, I guess, practicality of the police department our size? The, with the, you know, the force that we do have as far as personnel, their ability to actually control a situation, the kind of situation that we're envisioning that they would be trying to control. Could that be, you know, practical just using the Norman Police Department?
This would outfit about 20, 23 people, I believe, is what it's projected to outfit. And I think we could handle a lot of situations. It just depends on how much was becoming violent out of that group and how the connections with them. I think when you connect with the groups and you're working well with them, we've had it back on Occupy Wall Street part, when people became violent then, even here in Norman, that we had those individuals reporting to us and they would point out the people that were violent and that helped us get into the crowd and pull those people out specifically. So if we continue to work well with the organizers of these events and there is a violent element of it, usually that violent element is not that large and I think our force could handle that. If it gets to where there's a huge outbreak or two large groups going against each other, well, yeah, we would probably have to call on other people to help us out.
And is OUPD and Councilmember Foreman mentioned, you know, her familiarity with OUPD and with the equipment they carry in their vehicles. So is Cleveland County Sheriff's Department and OUPD, are they or would they be trained in this similar, similar stuff? And would they be trained in a way where they would work with Norman PD if asked to? similar stuff? And would they be trained in a way where they would work with Norman PD if asked to?
I, I think they would. They've started going to our academy. You know, the people from down here at the Norman campus goes through our academy. And we work well with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office. I don't know that they have any type of field force right now. But they probably do have some equipment. And they could train with us, which would be really nice because that's all local here. Moore does have a field force unit that they use. That's about the size that I'm talking about. I believe 25 to 30 probably is what they have equipped. So we could all train together and it may have better outcomes if we did have to call on other people to strengthen our numbers for some type of event, which would be really good to work together and all have similar training.
Okay. I appreciate the information and answers those questions, chief. Thanks.
Okay. I think that's all. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. I, it was, so we've had a break requested. We have been at it for three hours. So let's take a few minutes to have a human break. And then when we return, we will begin the public hearing and I appreciate your patience. Go ahead and turn off your mics and your cameras, please.
Looks like we have everybody back but Councilmember Carter.
All right. Well, we will give them just a minute. Let me get settled. All right. Well, people are ready to make comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less and we will begin.
I'll start with some comments from the YouTube channel and just fill in as we have need. Marcy King, Ward six. Have we looked at other software? Tableau is extremely difficult to work with. There's a great option. Q U L I K. That is much friendlier. I'm an expert on both options. Don't recommend. There's more research and discussion that needs to happen. Great points by Kate. Vote no. You can go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Alan. I'm from Ward eight. I just wanted you to vote no on this grant. Please, please vote no. I've got a few things I wanted to say, but first I wanted to say that I don't believe that the police are going to be an unbiased force when it comes to these right wing militias. I think we've seen it across the country. I've seen it personally here in Oklahoma. The police are cozy with these right wing militias. They are coordinating with them. They are infiltrated by them, and that's according to FBI studies. The FBI has stated that there is one premises infiltration within police departments all over the country. We've seen this in Oklahoma. They are, they're one of the same. They're cozy together. And so I think that this, it's, it's obvious to all of us. And it's an insult to say otherwise, that this equipment is used, it is, this grant is, is, is in place to get equipment to use against racial justice movements. And that's what, it's movements for black liberation. That's what this equipment is meant for. This is coming straight from the DOJ. This is Attorney General Bill Barr, who is basically acting as the personal lawyer for Donald Trump, who has personally emboldened these militias be at the polls. So to say that right in the middle and checking both sides equally, that's not accurate. They would, they would lose this grant if they actually policed these right. Barr would strip that away, which leads me to what, main thing I'm concerned with is the connection to ICE. So in 2017, the Department of Justice told over is that they would be disqualified from this particular JAG grant if they continued their non ICE. Several, six states sued them. Courts in Chicago, Philadelphia and San Francisco backed up the states, but a US appeals court in Manhattan said that the Attorney General these conditions on the grant. And so since there's different courts that have had different views on it, go to the Supreme Court. And since we have this new nominee that's going to be ending up on the Supreme Court soon, we know that is going to back up this, this, making them, making Norman cooperate with ICE if we and so what that means is for 26K, we're going to be selling out any undocumented resident of Norman to be potentially extrajudicially deported forcibly sterilized. We know what ICE is doing today. We don't even, we can't even predict what kind of human rights violations they're going to be doing tomorrow. So we have to be, we have to consider that. Also, wanted to make a reference to the, the march that we had in June, pretty, pretty started over at the mall and then marched over to the police station. Was there, I think I saw Holman there. This was, this was organized by high school kids. And so it was a lot of high school kids and then just people from the community that wanted to stand up for racial justice and for police accountability. We were met with, you know, there was Norman police. There was one particular on the roof that had the Betsy Ross mask on his face, which is an allusion to slavery times. So that sends a very racist message. He was up there with his gun. We knew what the threat was, but my point is that Mayor Clark handled that without police. Police didn't Mayor Clark used crowd control by listening to people and engaging with people. And, and that's, that's why that there is no stories of trauma from that, that encounter. Like we're going to hear stories from trauma from Oklahoma City because the mayor did not act in that same way. The mayor let the police do their crowd control. And then police count, crowd control always translates into police violence. So please, I, I don't understand why, I was there that day. I respected Mayor Clark for, for engaging with people and respecting what they had to say and saying Black Lives Matter and and telling them, making promises that she was going to try to include people of color in, in the, in the, the city, the work, in the workings of the city in a way that they have not been included before. But it seems like you're going the opposite direction from that. If you're, if you're trying to more militarize the police. If you're working with Barr, we don't trust Attorney General Barr right now. This is directly related to him and their agenda to keep Trump in office even when he loses the election. So this is directly tied to that. Please vote no. Please vote no. Thank you very much.
And for my reference, Madam Clerk, is that the timer we should be listening for, for three minutes? I heard a beeping.
Yes, that's a timer.
Okay.
Kristen Thomas, Ward six. Please vote no on this grant. We cannot afford it and it is absolutely not necessary. This will incite more violence than it will prevent. The dialogue needs to be de-escalation, not increasing violence. I don't trust they will use these funds as they are stating, using the election as reason to approve is irrelevant. They wouldn't, they probably wouldn't even have the fear by then. We are three weeks from the election. My daughter participated in the high school student march. Very peaceful. They don't need this gear. Cynthia Rogers, Ward four. How soon would the equipment be ordered and arrive to the city? How much time is needed for training of use of riot shields? Caroline Webb, Ward one. This will move into escalated tensions and increase fear of police. Terrible idea. Vote no. Vote no.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Lynn Pruitt, Ward 2, I commend the Norman Police Department for being prepared and applying for this grant. Our city could be aggravated by being near the university and also by the greater Oklahoma City area. I would impress on the Norman Police Department the responsibility of knowing the parameters of this grant and reviewing the parameters with similar agencies so that we do not violate any of those parameters within the grant. Thank you.
Megan Strawn, Ward 2, the NPD has done nothing since June to regain the confidence of Norman citizens. Vote no. Brandy Studley, Ward 1, why do you keep trying to add money to the police? The grant says it has to be paid back. We don't need to get gear on a what-if. NPD is already the highest funded. I have been to every protest in Norman and never has any violence happened except for by the cops and their supporters. This is totally a militia move. Vote no.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Blanc, Ward 2. I'd like to start by asking that the city council consider not accepting the grant proposal money? To say that I, I, it was back in June, I participated with the, a small demonstration of the fine folks on the east side of Oklahoma City. We walked, we marched to the state Capitol. And I, maybe things took place later that evening, but the organized march there was very peaceful. But I would say that, the topic of making sure Norman stays committed to the way that Norman has handled large events in the past, I would say seeing state troopers at the event in Oklahoma City, seeing the way that the local police in Oklahoma City handled the situation, only acted to raise tensions. I believe that having that, that big stick approach is not the way the Norman needs to go forward and will only further hurt the public trust for our local police department. And finally, I would like to say that having that grant funding come in so close to the election seems like it won't be very effective. And on the topic of having the tool ready in case of an emergency, I understand that logic, but having the tool implies it will be used. If you wish to truly be committed to making sure we maintain public trust and maintain peaceful solutions with our local crowd control here in the city, we need to make sure that we eliminate the risk of us using tools that we don't need. So I would ask us to go ahead and recommit to making sure we continue Norman's excellent tradition of maintaining peaceful protests, large demonstrations, and large events that I know we're capable of doing, as we do every year with OU games. So thank you again, and please vote no.
Micah Livingston, Ward 4, we don't need to be spending more money right now for things we don't need. If you want more money, put it to a public vote. I'm sick of all the lumping together of emergency services. The people of Norman want increased paramedics and increased firefighter capabilities. We don't need more riot gear. John Barber, Ward 8, this is a great idea to protect the officers from rocks, bricks, or any other objects being thrown at them during uprising of society. Douglas Dodge, Ward 8, I support using the grant. Melanie Mitchon, Ward 5, from purely financial standpoint, this is not a good idea. This is a loan, not a grant. We should vote no. Amanda Wilson, Ward 1, I support the grant. Alexandria Pinner, Ward 1, vote no. This is a bad use of funds. Norman has a long history of peaceful protests. This is unnecessary and expensive escalation by NPD. Clarence Hill, Ward 6, give the police what they need to maintain a civil society. Vote yes. Marcy Carter-Manson, Ward 4, if the grant has to be repaid, I urge Elizabeth to vote no. Money could be spent in better ways. Robert Campbell, Ward 6, vote no. We want to encourage freedom of speech, not fear of the police. Alex Lampier, Ward 2, vote no. That's all the public comments from the YouTube feed.
Okay, I do have some emails. I'm not sure if we have another in-person comment. I'll go ahead and read one while that person is getting ready. This email is from Jennifer Shattuck. She asked if John Steggy can please clarify if the grant has to be paid back. Is it a true grant or a loan? Jennifer Shattuck, Ward 6. And I'll come back to the others after this public comment. We'll have to go ahead and unmute your mic, ma'am.
Um, I had a question real quick. I have an account.
Can you please introduce yourself with your name and what ward you're from?
I, I was asking if I could read two separate accounts, so that's why I waited till I introduced myself. If it, would it be okay if I did that?
Just represent yourself, please. I, I think that's probably the best way to go. We could email the other one to us.
I mean, I would prefer to read theirs, if you wouldn't mind. I'll just add it to my time then. Um, I'm choosing to not disclose my name tonight.
I don't, hold, can we, is that permitted, Madam Clerk? I feel like we, isn't that part of the record?
It should be part of the record, yes. You don't have to disclose your address. If you could disclose your name and ward, that would be sufficient.
I apologize, I'm just trying to make sure we have everything we need. I know it's awkward in a virtual setting, but this is what we would require in, in all meetings.
My first name and last name, then?
You can also email this to us. I promise, we will see it. I don't know if you could do it immediately, though.
So Benjamin, I am from the, I'm from Ward and Shawnee, I don't remember which one. So I was out in Oklahoma City during May 30th and 31st, and during both times, I experienced extreme violence by the police using these weapons that you're planning to create. I don't think that you guys should waste money on this, nor do I think you should put the citizens of your, of your city in danger. When I was out, I treated multiple people because I am a street medic. I am a volunteer that goes out and tries to help folks during these times. I treated head injuries from tear gas canisters, people that were completely unconscious because they were shot at with a tear gas canister. I saw the lawn be lit on fire by tear gas canisters. I myself was shot twice. I was shot with a baton round in the thigh and once across my face. It is extremely irresponsible to put these in the hands of anybody. We're not at war. There is no reason to have these kinds of weapons available to police officers. Please consider all of your what-ifs, but what if one officer decides, oh, this is the right time and it's not? These, you don't need them. You could reinvest in doing training for de-escalation, mental health, help. But the damage I've seen done by tear gas, baton rounds, all of these things have been absolutely atrocious. And to just decide to give them to anybody, to control citizens that are just trying to express the oppression that they're under. So Oklahoma City PD shouldn't be using these crowd controlling weapons, neither should you guys. And so that's what I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Okay. Next comment is from Ann Gallagher. If you're going to use a fire truck and fireman's safety equipment for a house or building fire, why wouldn't you have safety equipment for police officers to protect lives and property? From Ward 6. Question came in, asking me to confirm if anyone can speak at a Norman City Council meeting that does not live in Norman. And the answer to that question is, the current policy of council has, does not limit that at this time. I have one more email to read while they're getting set up in there. It is a little lengthy, so I'll try to make sure I get it all in. This is from Stephen Ellis. I am writing to, the Norman Police Department is already in a state of open insurrection against civil authorities. They are refusing to enforce COVID-19-related laws and they are refusing to follow Norman's mask mandate themselves. Ideally, it would be appropriate to block even current NPD funding until the police leadership sorts out these issues, but I can recognize that may, may be a tough step to take. It should be easy to, to reject the grant, however. Project 1, the crowd management equipment and training is premised on politically laden falsehood. Talk about recent incidents of violence in neighboring jurisdictions and effective crowd management where a significant threat of violence was present, is a thinly veiled criticism of the Black Lives Matter movement. That previous statement was a quote in the staff report, I believe. Given that, we know, given what we know about NPD now and their explicit rationale for asking for the grant, it would be foolish to suppose that this equipment and training would not be used in a partisan way. You should ask that the grant would actually, you should ask what the grant would actually buy. The staff report says use of barriers, fences, and uniformed police officers inadequate given in Norman Police Department fears. Norman Police Department is asking for something more. What are they even asking for? The only project that makes any sense here is Project 2, Analytical Software for the Police Data. But there are no funds for that in the grant request when you look at the budget in the staff report. And he goes through the items that we covered earlier. Number 1, $2,623 to pass through to the C- Cleveland County Sheriff's Office. Number 2, $12,849 to crowd management protective equipment. Number 3, $5,000 to crowd management training. Number 4, $2,414 to teleconferencing and equipment. And $3,340 to teleconferencing software. The purse strings are the only control the city council has retained for the oversight of the NPD. Don't give that up, too. I'm going to ask to unmute your mic. If you'll go ahead and accept that, you may speak.
Hi. I am choosing to disclose my name, though I do have anxiety about that as a safety concern. I'm sure is part of why the previous commenter was not comfortable at first disclosing his name. I suggest to take note of that in the future. It's understandable to have that on record, but it's not something that should be required. I'm here to talk about my experience on the night of May 30th in Oklahoma City. I showed up at 2:30 in class in around seven o'clock when groups, people started gathering the killing of George Floyd. I stayed with that test pretty late into the night. I was shot that night by police with a baton round, a 4mm baton round, which is a full metal bullet encased in rubber, if that's not something anyone was aware of. That's what a rubber bullet is. I was with my hands up, backing away from the line of shields approximately 20 feet off, when an officer decided to shoot me in the knee brace. I now have a permanent scar. If you can see, I pulled flesh out of my knee brace that night. As a trans person, I was afraid to reach out for medical care because transphobia in medical environments is a serious issue. I tied myself off with a paper, with microfiber towel and had to be convinced after three hours, I decided it was okay to go to the ER. I could have bled out that night. This is a photo of my brace the day after I was shot. Make this into account on the decision to have Oklahoma City police train your officers. There were children out there that night. I saw teenagers getting hit in the face with tear gas canisters. Young kids out there were just scared and afraid. I do not trust the Oklahoma City police to keep your officers properly trained and your citizens in Norman safe. That's all I'm going to say. My name is Zell Scott. Pronouns are the singular they. I was going to introduce myself and I never did.
Thank you. Can you, can you tell us what ward you live in, please?
I'm a resident of Oklahoma City.
Okay. Thank you for sure.
I am concerned about Norman, so I drove down here that, tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, Alan?
Yeah, just a second. There's no more.
Okay, thank you. For no other public comments, for in-person, no other emails. And I'm, I'm assuming Annalise has no other, not, no other YouTube feed comments.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman. Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed and it was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion to accept or reject the grant.
Second.
Second.
Do we have to clarify if that's a motion to accept or a motion to reject?
Matthew, did you move that? I mean, excuse me, Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, that'd be a motion to accept.
Thank you. All right. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
And Councilmember Holman.
I appreciate the presentation and information. I also appreciate all the feedback we have received about this item. I think a couple of things that do stand out to me about it is, I do have concern about the one particular item involving the crowd control gear. I think the audiovisual stuff is needed all throughout the police department building, really, but even more so now when we're having to do so many things online. And I would like to see those things taken care of, but I do have a lot of concern about living in Norman my entire life, really, equipping our police department to respond in this way to the public, the public that pays for the police department, that pays for the government. And if that public is And if that public is protesting their government, I have concern about sending government agents to respond to them in this way. That's kind of how I feel. Maybe it's a little bit libertarian for some, but that is a concern I have based on my life experience in this town. I agree with a lot of the comments about, in other places where we see this equipment used to respond to situations, very rarely does the situation get calmed down without an escalation of violence. So it may help protect those officers, but the mere presence of those officers wearing that equipment creates a violent situation in many cases that we have been able to observe. And I agree, one of the parts that stands out to me most is the lack of that response in Norman, in my opinion, has played a major role in why we haven't experienced those same things. And I have bragged to people about, when people talk about militarization of the police in the United States, I've bragged to people about Norman and how we're not like that. We don't have armored vehicles. And I know some other people think we should and are going to disagree with me about this, but I think it's, I think it's something that we've been proud of, that we don't have armored vehicles, that we don't have riot gear and tear gas and rubber bullets, and that we don't respond that way to our public, to our people. And I think that has served us very well for a long time in this town. Maybe that's why I haven't seen those pictures of Norman police officers ever wearing that type of stuff, and I can never remember ever seeing it. I know the evolution of that equipment has changed a lot over the years, but I've never seen really our police wear anything but their typical uniform if they weren't a member of the SWAT team responding to something. And so that is a big concern. I think one of the comments that stood out from the public to me the most was, "Crowd control by listening and engaging with the people." And I think that's what we've done very effectively in Norman. I think not only have our elected officials done it, but our police department, we've heard numerous examples recently, but there's been many over the years, too, this being a college town, where people are generally more politically active than typical towns. And peaceful protests, people marching over important social justice issues, things like that is not uncommon in a town like this. And our police department, over the years, has always been able to respond by listening and engaging with the people. And I feel that in the current state of things, responding to the public in a different way like this could definitely provide or present problems that we haven't had to deal with before. I definitely understand the other side. Chief talks about protection and about local, maintaining a local ability to command these orders. I think that's a very valid point that really sticks with me, that would lead me to support something like this, just generally speaking, is that I would ultimately always prefer that our local authorities be in control of things. I don't like state government telling us what to do. I don't like the federal government telling us what to do. I don't like the county government. I don't like, I don't like any governmental entity trying to tell the city what to do or other governments telling other governments to do. And I like the idea of our police department being under the command or control of our police chief, whoever it may be, in the future, now, and not, you know, the head of the State Highway Patrol or, you know, some other entity, Oklahoma City or something like that. So I think that's a really valid point, but my goal is to not have those incidents where we need a response like that in Norman. And so far in our history, we haven't. We've been fortunate. And I, that is really the, I, as it stood out to me the most, I filled up a couple pages here and lost the spot. Here we go. The mention of the training being not local, though, was a point of interest. I did hear the chief say, "We would eventually like to have that done locally or within our department or within our neighboring, but as it would stand right now, it could potentially even be an out-of-state situation where that training is occurring." And so, local command, but not local training, would be a concern of mine as well. I would like to have a kind of a more broad discussion about this type of thing in our community, since we've resisted going down this path, like other cities have, many of which are smaller than Norman, that have equipment and vehicles and things that we don't. But I think we need to have a bigger discussion in Norman about where we want to go in the future here when it comes to how our police, how our city government responds to the citizens when they are upset with how we handle things. So that's kind of my standpoint on this. If the replacement of our existing equipment is an absolute priority in the police department and these other items as well, I don't think that it's a, it's not a very large sum of money, in my opinion, in our overall city budget, for that to be, if that's a priority, then I would like to see that as a budget priority when we start doing the budget talks upcoming. That's my thoughts on it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Foreman.
In the public comments, people mentioned tear gas and rubber bullets, and I just want to reiterate that we're not purchasing weapons for this grant. This is personal protective gear for the officers. If you know anything about me, you know I work at a police department and, you know, I think my chief is like the greatest person ever, and he's been a cop for over 40 years. And I asked him, "How many people have you shot?" Because in 40 years, you would assume the likelihood of that is very high, and his answer was zero. So we, we, the people have equipped him with a gun to protect people, but he's never had to shoot anyone. So giving the police officers helmets to protect them if people are attacking them is not the same as militarizing them. And it doesn't mean that helmets are coming out every two seconds and riot gear would come out, you know, for any reason. I think if it became an issue, if they just, you know, deployed and went straight to that, that would be a problem and something for council to discuss further. But I would like one clarification. It is, to my understanding, that this is not anything that we have to pay for or pay back. It is grant to us. It's not a loan. Can, can someone clarify that for the public? Because there's been a lot of questions with that.
Chief, do you mind if I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead. You got it.
Um, the only thing I can, I can figure out that may be a confusion is that this is a reimbursement grant. So it is not a payback grant, but it is one where we have to spend the money and receive the equipment before we get reimbursed for it. So there's no loan that we pay back or anything like that. It is a one-for-one, giving us the money back.
They can't hear you. It's on mute.
What, what is it?
City Council meeting.
Oh.
We just have to, we just have to make the purchase and then they reimburse us the funding.
Are you finished, Councilmember Foreman? Okay. Councilmember Petron.
I didn't really intend for this to be a final comment. I did have another question that I, Mayor, if that's okay. It was alluded to that we have intel of threats specifically. Without divulging your intel, what kind of threats are those?
That's just a civil unrest-type events, but it's, as people alluded to earlier, those are around election and going forward from there. And yeah, we, we wouldn't have this equipment by Election Day probably and the training, but it's going forward from there that hopefully we would. And when there are events, we would be prepared. And as Councilmember Foreman has said, it's not something that we would change anything we do now, but if they are needed, we would have them. And as people in the comments section said, we would not have to rely on Oklahoma City coming down here to do anything then. So I think it's good that we would have the equipment ourselves to deal with any situations that may arise.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to say is, do you know, the threats that you've received, do they have specificity to them such that you know the names of groups that, and are they politically motivated? Or is it more like, things are amping up?
There, there are no names of groups. This is nationwide warnings, and it probably is politically motivated due to them referencing around the election time and moving forward from there.
Okay, that was just a question that I had. I may raise a hand a little bit for a comment, but I wanted to get that understood.
Councilmember Beerman.
So Councilmember Holman expressed a lot of the same points that I was going to make. Just to not belabor those points, I just wanted to mention that I had a lot of people that I know in Oklahoma City on May 30th and 31st, people from Norman, like some of the ones we heard tonight, people from Oklahoma City. And it's not just tear gas and rubber bullets. I know people who had head injuries by being shoved with shields. They shoved from the side. They didn't even see them coming. And so this equipment and the utilization of this equipment, I mean, I have a friend in Oklahoma City who actually ended up distancing herself from her family because one of her family members was a police officer who was in Oklahoma City who was bragging about what was happening on May 30th and 31st. "This equipment makes you feel invincible," he said. "I felt like a soldier," he said. The helmets and the shields, all of this has a very militarized look to it. And I don't feel that we have enough reassurances that the next time we have a protest, the evidence of caution, this equipment isn't going to be used. And I don't think that it's necessary here. I think if we had extremely local threats, first of all, I would hope that we would all have heard about them before a purchase like this was proposed and that we would have an executive session or something to describe exactly what it is that we might be facing as a city that our police department would be involved in. So I will not be supporting this tonight. If the police department would like to come back with just the training and possibly the software, I would love to take a look at that more deeply, but the largest expenditure of this grant is not one that I can support for all of the reasons that have been cited here tonight.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes, this equipment is a equipment that we already have, and I assume that there's not going to be an expectation to use it more frequently just because it's new. The way I see it, bottom line is that if we have the old equipment and it fails, then law enforcement is going to feel vulnerable and they're going to escalate force. And then we're looking at having outside agencies come in to take control of our city. But if we get the new equipment, we're replacing equipment that we already have, so there's no net change on capability, but we get the, the software, the data provisioning software and presentation software, we're getting the training, which from the sounds of it, hopefully isn't coming from Oklahoma City. And, and we don't have to pay the money back. We have to pay for the equipment first and then get reimbursed. So it's not really costing the city any additional funds to get this additional software and training. So I, I mean, I don't see any reason not to support it. That's, thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, so in listening to this discussion, I think back about my direct involvement with the Norman Police Department through the Animal Welsh Bear Oversight Committee, which began in the late, oh, whatevers, '08, '09. It's basically spanned three decades, and I have, you know, firsthand gotten to know, you know, Chief Humphrey. I've gotten to know Lance Arnold, who's now the police chief in Weatherford, Texas, I believe. J.D. Younger was on our committee, who's now the police chief in Edmond. And now Kevin Foster, our current police chief. And all of these people exhibited all of the qualities that we desire in our police officers. They're outstanding individuals that are thinking ahead and thinking of people first, and they're thinking of defusing situations. I watched Chief Foster the night in June that went till 4:00 in the morning and how he, you know, quietly de-escalated the crowd. And so I have a lot of confidence in our police officers, and, and the arguments that Councilmember Beerman made are exactly the arguments that solidified how I feel, is that we don't want to have to call in out-of-town police to deal with a situation that's escalating in our city. We want our Norman police officers doing that. And, and Councilmember Petron made the comment, you know, should we be looking at more protective gear? You know, things to protect them from, you know, bullets more, you know? So I think, to me, this is, this is something that we need to move forward with. It's, it's, it's a grant, and Lord knows, we've got very, very intense budget issues in this city due to a lot of different factors, mainly a pandemic. And so I'm going to be supporting this, and, and my fourth reason to support this is the fact that Councilmember Foreman is supporting that, who has a direct involvement with policing. So she, her expertise will be something I will be weighing heavily and relying on heavily in these discussions. And so with all of those factors, I will be supporting this.
Okay, well, I would really, I, again, go back to that I want a legal opinion on those nine pages of relationships and being married to the feds. I'm not, that, to me, is the very essence of Norman losing its control, its local control, and I'm not willing to do that over $26,000. I was hoping that, kind of along the lines of what Councilmember Beerman was saying about executive session, if there is some sort of substantial threat, that is appropriate for executive session. If there is something, if there's some named groups or chatter that our PD is hearing about that they need- some sort of substantial threat, that is appropriate for executive session. If there is something, if there's some named groups or chatter that our PD is hearing about, that they need immediate assistance from city council, let us know, we're here. I mean, and I do, I mean that seriously because as we look at what I'm going through in my mind right now is Governor Whitmer. That was militia groups, that was the Three Percenters. It's also known that another active militia group are the Oath Keepers that are creating massive threats in different areas of the country. And we have militia groups here. And we have some that are parts of these same groups. That being overarching national, and then they have their own local names. So like Governor Whitmer's was Wolverine, so that they were part of the Three Percenters. All that's to say, my concern and that that he was, that Joe was just referencing, I'm not sure how, with the exception of the shield, it almost looks like these groups are trying to emulate this look. In other words, what if our, our cops are mistaken by those militia? The militia groups want to look like this. And I think that's important to take into account because right now, our cops are clearly cops. Turn that back on Booker. And you need to leave for this conversation, please. Go, stepfather. Thank you. So my concern is that we're only looking at perceived threats that are not at all what we're seeing happening around the country with domestic terrorism. And make no mistake, that's domestic terrorism. So again, and I'm, Mr. Pyle, I hope you're hearing me and seeing me. If you need in an executive session and you all get wind of something, I want our officers safe. Because this is about infiltrating and intentionally blending in. And I don't want to help them. And we've been able to keep the temperature dialed down by not blending in with that look. So I'm not going to jump in bed with the feds over 26 grand. If there is something that you need though, an immediate allocation, speak freely with us in executive session. Ms. Walker, I trust that you will make that happen in a snap if it has to happen for a special executive session, an emergency one. And I feel confident that our community wants our officers to be safe from militia type groups as well. But until then, we haven't had, and no, we don't have this gear. This, these are new things. We have one piece of equipment of this. The rest of it, the whole getup, the outfit that these groups are trying to emulate, we don't have that for our officers. And we don't have the big long batons and all of that. So this would be a new thing. So I, I think that I'm going to pass for today. And believe it or not, I think it's actually going to keep our officers safer according to the studies that we see and the threats that we're actually seeing on the ground. And it's those people that we hear from as council members, the threats that we get. It's those kind of groups. So that's why I was asking questions along the lines that I was. And please let us know if they need allocate to you in a emergency way. I'm all in about that. But on this one, I think I'm going to pass.
Councilmember Hall?
Councilmember Hall?
Are you having trouble unmuting? There you go. Oh.
I couldn't hear the last of Councilmember Patron's comments.
She's, do you want her to repeat? Really goodly, it's really unfortunate. She can't, you can't hear anything? You're unmuted, it's your turn.
Do you need to exit the meeting and come back in?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have listened carefully to what all of my colleagues have had to say. And I really resonate with a lot of things that have been said. I do think it's really important that we continue to move in the direction of de-escalating when we can. We have a history in Norman of having peaceful protests and a right to having peaceful protests as we all deserve. And we need to continue this community conversation in how we want to continue to have local control over the decisions that we make. And to keep our police officers safe and equipped with the equipment that they need. And so I do agree with, you know, Councilmember Holman mentioned that a good part of this grant is for advanced technology that they don't currently have. And for things that they do need to operate in the 21st century. I also have some real concerns about the ties, the strings that may or may not be attached. I can't pretend to understand all of the pages of the document that was presented to us, so I do have some concerns about that. I I just really feel like this is an important conversation to continue having and to have the protocols in place of when we are in a position to have to use equipment like this and what the circumstances would be and what the mayor's role is. So I am interested in continuing to understand how that would all work. It is a grant. It is something that we can be reimbursed for. I do have concerns about the use of this equipment and how we're going to use it. But I also really do respect where Councilmember Foreman is coming from and her experience in her police department. And so I am going to support this tonight.
Mayor, that's all the comments.
All right. I feel like I should make a comment. It is not a surprise, or it's not a secret, that I did support the Bearcat. Because I wanted our police officers to have the equipment they needed, when they needed it, if they needed it. But I think any elected official is served well to learn while they're here. And they do that by listening to everyone. And we are in a very historic time. And I think now more than ever, we have an opportunity to see what equipment can do. Not only in protecting people, but in the messages it sends and the escalation it can create by its sheer existence. I too am concerned about the possibility of violence anywhere in Oklahoma, but obviously in Norman. I mean, the emergency powers that we use to address COVID-19, talk about Molotov cocktails. I mean, that's what it's been for. So I too would appreciate clarification on what my role is in those situations, given I honestly think that's what it was written for. But with all of the protests, I attended all of them. I appreciated the first comment acknowledging that we did our part to communicate and to listen to de-escalate. And that is the role that I played. I went to the Blue Lives Matter rally at Andrews Park, I went to all of them. We are in a very delicate time in our community. And the immediate threat that I foresee, based on what we're hearing from our own police department, but also on the national scene and all these webinars and meetings that I've been attending through mayor's networks, is that it's election day, that's the next immediate threat. But if we can't have the equipment by the next immediate threat, why would we tip the scales of a very delicate balance that our city is trying to walk as we reimagine what policing can look like? We have made some very hard choices to move us forward. And my concern is that this decision would set us back. And I don't know if I can put a value on that. This is certainly a divisive issue. There's no question that everyone on this council wants all of our public servants to be safe. Police officers, firefighters, our IMSA, obviously our medical professionals on the front lines right now. And PPE is huge. One of those many phrases you may not have uttered hardly ever before COVID-19, and this is a version of PPE for sure. But this version of PPE its existence is divisive. And I appreciated Councilmember Holman's comments that he's been proud to say, we don't have it. But then on the other side, I've heard people completely embarrassed that we don't have it because it's 2020, we're not a small town anymore. My concern again is that adding this equipment is not going to move our community forward. Not today. Maybe in 2019, maybe in 2021. But right here, right now, in this moment, I don't think it's worth $26,000 to move our community backwards in all of the progress I think that we've, are at least attempting to make. So those are my concerns about all of it. It's a difficult decision. But for $26,000, I am not willing to jeopardize our progress. If it comes down to it, as Councilman Patron mentioned, I'm confident we can find $26,000 to make sure that we are ready to, to move forward on that front. But for all of the concerns I've heard, I do feel that they outweigh the benefits of $26,000 from the federal government for essentially riot gear. For crowd management in the most volatile time in my lifetime, certainly. When it comes to, I think, police and resident relations. I appreciate Mr. Steady, as always, your success at getting grants. So I don't want to ignore that and I appreciate your hard work. I just don't think now is the time for this grant for that purpose for our city. If there are no other comments, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to accept the grant. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
No.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Patron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I have changed my mind on voting.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
No.
Councilwoman Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No.
Motion fails by a vote of four to five, voting in favor, Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Hall, excuse me, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Foreman, and Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was a difficult vote, but I think we have shown, we don't take difficult votes lightly. I appreciate everybody's comments, everybody's research. We came at it from all sides and I just want to thank all of you for that constructive dialogue that I knew we were going to get tonight. I appreciate you all so very much. And now we move on to the final item of the night miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council only. Remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
I do have some comments from the YouTube feed, Mayor Kristin Thomas, Ward Six. "Please do not tie us to the federal government, this feels like a Trojan horse using the police as a catalyst. Do more research on anything we get from the feds." And a merit, Ward Five, "How can this council and mayor say they want officers to be safe when they currently wear and use expired equipment? Get in a patrol car and see the reality they face." Michael Livingston, Ward Four, disappointed. Question for Lee, "Will they get the Tesla shields so they can try out the saltwater balloon tactics?" That's all I have at this time.
Okay, I believe we have one public comment in person. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Michael Blanc, Ward Two. What I'd like to say that I liked seeing how that discourse went. I'm proud of our council as a whole and I think we did the right thing, but I'm glad we had that input from everyone. The thing I'd like to say is, I do have concerns though, that about safety on both election day and of course, the three days of early voting that we're going to have here at the county election board prior to the actual vote on November 3rd. For example, the last day of voting is going to be on the 31st, that's that Saturday, the last day of October. Concern is, I mean, I'm sure that we'll have it under control, but it is a weird election year. So while I jazzed about lots of riot gear, I do think that the potential threat of far right wing militias are a real concern. It's something that we would be served well, honestly, addressing. You know, I wouldn't vote it early, back, maybe like four weeks ago now, time flies, but back when we had our big bond vote, I think we had a couple of county officers who were there at the county election board. But you know, that sort of thing, I think if we want to make sure the public feels safe while voting, having just a handful of officers there, I think would be fine. But that's, that's my, that's my, honestly, my larger concern. I'm not concerned about public administration. I'm far more concerned about potential groups that are at work, who might come out and show force. And that's, that's something as a voter who will likely be voting in person, either early or on November 3rd, that I would like to see our city take seriously. So thank you so much.
David Malone, Ward Three, "Great job, Mayor, this went well, really well."
No other public comments on my side.
No other public comments here.
All right, that leaves us to council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Bearman, Ward One.
Well, I don't have a whole lot tonight. I do want to put a pitch out there for anyone who has the luxury or the privilege of being available on election day. The county election board could still use poll workers. As many of you know, most of the poll workers we have in Cleveland County tend to be on the, I'll say, retired side. And that also puts them at higher risk of exposure for COVID during this election. So you can do So you can do, you can sign up with the county election board. The training is fairly quick. It is paid, depending on what job you have with them, anywhere from $87 up to $97 for the day. We'll say it doesn't, it doesn't come out to all that much because you're, it's a long day. It's 6:30 AM till who knows when in the evening after polls close, and they're able to wrap everything up and get counted. But it's really, really, really important that they have more poll workers. They are, as you can imagine, expecting a bigger than average turnout. And so if you do have the ability or know someone who does I was very disappointed to find out that elect officials cannot serve as poll workers, even if there's nothing related to the government that you serve on the ballot. So I can't be a poll worker in November. I really wanted to be, but I can't. So I'm making the public appeal out to you all. And I know there are a lot of people concerned about the election, as we heard in comments tonight. And I will just say that Oklahoma is a state that has laws against electioneering and against poll monitoring. So my hope is that our police department will be ready and available to help enforce that in order to ensure that Norman voters stay safe. Every conversation I've been able to have with someone to explain that, that Oklahoma does have laws preventing this from happening. They are surprised because Oklahoma doesn't seem like the state that would be proactive on things like that, but we are, and we have these protections for Norman voters. So this is something that I'm hoping we can continue to enforce as we get closer to the election, especially with those early voting days. But I encourage everyone to make a plan to vote. Almost every single bank has a notary. If you don't feel comfortable sending a copy of your driver's license, every single tag agency also has notary services, and you don't have to pay for them. So please vote. You have time to request your ballot. It can be tracked online through the state voter portal. So you can see when your ballot's been mailed to you. You can see when it's been received. And all of that should help you feel confident in that form of voting. I have filled out my ballot. I just need to pop a couple stamps on it. If you're going to mail it, put two stamps on it. Unless you have a three cent stamp lying around, because it's 58 cents to mail. There is no such thing as too much postage on your ballot. So everyone, please get out and vote. I know we don't have a whole lot locally on the ballot, but this is, this is a really important election, and ensuring that we have strong voter turnout is going to be, is going to be really important. So if anyone ever has any questions about that, I'm happy to point them to the right resource. And so everyone, please be happy, be safe for the next couple of weeks, and we'll see you right before Halloween.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Unmuted? Hello, hello?
You're good.
Hear me?
Yes.
We're good, okay. Well, um, I just want to say a few brief comments about my good friend, David Perry. I think back when I was leaving council, something stuck with me, that Councilmember Wilson told me. She said that she admired my stubbornness, and and it was a funny comment. And I thought back over the course of the time that I was on council. And I'm one of those guys that likes to go to corn bed, corn bed, corn, bread and beans, and there I would frequently see David. And David was always someone that was supportive of what we were doing at City Hall. And his confidence gave me a lot of strength and inspiration during the times that were very adversarial and very controversial, you know, over the last few years. And so when I was making my decision to not seek reelection, in the process of making that decision, I was weighing a lot of factors. And I think Councilmember Holman and I were having a joint ward meeting over on in Reeves Field about the Inspire Norman program, and and David was there, and he came up afterwards. And we had a really long talk about the city and our shared common values and the things that we believe the city can aspire to. And and at that, at that time, it was the precipitating event where I felt like it's time to pass the baton. And 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 so I did at that moment decide that I wasn't going to seek reelection, knowing that David was going to seek the seat. And that he felt passionate about the issues that were still to be completed that I felt were important issues for Ward Two. And I now in a in a cosmic sort of way feel like the baton is back. And I feel like I'm able to pick up the issues and the things that he was passionate about and blend those with those that we had already been working on together and maybe move the city forward. So I'm just humbled by the opportunity that council was giving me tonight. I do not take it lightly and look forward to many good positive discussions ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, Councilman Patron?
Okay, um, so one of the things I had wanted to talk about before in miscellaneous comments was trying to come up with some other ideas on how we could meet together, because I'm really tired of this Zoom. But I also want to be safe from keeping everybody safe from COVID. So I spoke with another resident in the community who gave a really good idea about using the top level of the library with those, with the glass to where we could, there's a lot more space to socially distance, and people could be a part of it that way. But it sounds like we're going to be meeting and sharing all that aerosols anyway. How about that? Maybe I'm like the president and have some immunity. Never knows. Anyway. So I wanted to also talk about we're going to the retreat. And and I'm really hoping that it's kind of like a reset button and that it gives council some time to I don't want to say bond. That's kind of a weird word to use. But some of you, I mean, I haven't even had a meeting with you in person at all, and that seems really bizarre. So some of you haven't even sat on the dais. That's crazy. So I do think that it is a better venue to lend itself to deliberations and conversation about all of these things, although I have to say that tonight's it's just taken, what, a few months now of doing Zoom, that it just really felt like tonight's conversation was good. It was in depth, and I I appreciated that. And that's what it's about. We don't have to always agree on everything. In fact, it's probably better deliberations would say that we don't agree on everything to get better policy, because we've got to be able to hear as many different kinds of points of view, especially from the public. The more opinions that we can solicit advice from and hear their reasoning, the better the policy outcomes, in my opinion. So I do want to reiterate to PD and to the city manager and to City Legal, if there's something that council needs to, if you need us, we're we're here. So let, we, we're ready to act if that needs to happen. And please go vote. Don't let anybody scare you out of your vote. And I think that's, I'm excited to talk about senior center. So let's get that done, council. Let's make sure that we walk out of the retreat knowing what our next steps are. Let's get it done.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
So let me just begin by saying, and I'm assuming you can hear me. Hang on just a second, because I have to turn down what I'm trying to Okay, I will spare you from my TV screaming at you. And so as you have figured out by now, I have lost my capability to get any audio for a good portion of the last of our conversation. So I do want to circle back and just say that obviously that rattled me because I can't hear anybody saying anything. And so I want to add a few remarks to the vote that we just took. So what I try to do almost all the time when I'm considering these decisions is the long term consequences and the short term consequences. And in this case, I as I said, really did resonate with many of the comments that our council members made. And I have the utmost respect for all of you, as you know. I think I got caught up a little bit in the technology piece of all of this, and that feels important to me to provide that for our police officers. And I'm hoping that we can find a way to do that. But as I was not hearing anyone, I was reflecting on the things that I had just said. And so the long term ramifications of all of this have already been spoken about at length. So I'm not going to go into that anymore. But I I need to keep my eye on the long term and what we're trying to accomplish in Norman and what we're trying to accomplish for our community. And we do have a reputation in Norman for having peaceful protests. Our police officers did make really good decisions when we were having multiple peaceful protests generated earlier this summer. And we, and I meant it when I said that we need to keep our eye on the ball on moving towards de-escalation and not creating situations that are going to escalate. I also have a responsibility to my constituents. And I know that the overwhelming response and the overwhelming comments that I got for whether or not to support this grant really reiterated a lot of things that have already been said. So to be true to myself and to be true to my constituents, that's why I changed my vote. I also want to reach out to residents of Ward Four. We've mentioned that we have a council retreat coming up this weekend. And I am interested in hearing from you on anything that you would like me to bring forward at our council retreat. You can reach me by email, by my cell phone number, which is on our website. And most of you really are pretty good at knowing how to find me right now. So would love to hear from you. And then the last thing I want to do is just publicly thank Mitch Bearoff from Ward Four, who has stepped up to fill a need that we had, a pretty immediate need that we had to have an alternate on our development review team, who is a resident of Ward Four for the Center City Form Based Code Development Review Team. So I really appreciate his willingness to step up and serve in this way. So thank you, Mitch, and let me hear from you, Ward Four.
Councilmember Hall, just a quick question on your audio that we lost. Do you think it was a Wi-Fi issue at at home versus a hardware issue that we need to ask Mr. Powers to take a peek at? We want to make sure you're totally equipped.
Hang on, I can't hear you. I have to go turn the TV up.
So there's a 30 second delay.
Sounds like a like sporting event in a giant arena kind of a thing.
Okay, what?
I wanted to know if you thought your, our current audio issue has to do with a Wi-Fi connection at your house versus a hardware issue where we can help try to remedy that for you before our next Zoom meeting? Thank you.
Just send an email. Just just send an email. All right. Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, so on agreements, good thing that we don't all agree, because if we did, we'd be stuck in a bubble on ballots. My wife and I, we submitted ours. We drove down to the Cleveland County Election Board, and we're able to hand them over without postage to the the clerk there, and is relatively painless. And I guess welcome back aboard, Councilmember Carter. Look forward to getting to know you a little bit, a little bit better. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Foreman?
So tomorrow's my birthday, and usually the night before my birthday, I am very reflective over the last year, and this has just been a really weird year. And I never thought I would close out my 36th year in a council meeting, so thanks for being here with me. I've reached out to Ward Six. They have given me copious amounts of things to talk about on Friday. I'm really pretty freaking excited to actually be in a room with everyone. I, it's just
Okay, I I gotta clarify. I don't want to ruin your birthday, but it's going to be a virtual retreat. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was going to wait till you guys got the, I know. There, I said it. I told you.
You know what? I'm I might just be going to N C E D anyway, and I'll just be there for Friday all by myself.
I'll go.
We can have drinks.
City of Norman, the mayor just ruined my birthday. Uh, okay, well then, I'm glad I don't have to see any of you. Are we still doing pictures? Okay.
No, we we can't be together. We, you all can't all be together, so we will have to reschedule that.
I guess for November, when we're all back in council chambers together anyway?
Well, okay. Well, then, never mind. So you all have a lovely evening, and I'll see you all virtually. Is the, or the public, there, it's going to be on YouTube then? So people, no, council retreat, no?
We we've never broadcast retreat. We will be video recording, I mean, recording it. And they're welcome to come down to the chambers, just like they are for any meeting. I will be in here by myself. They can join me. And there's no public comment during retreat. They're just there to observe if they want to. This is council's time to come together to discuss their priorities.
Okay. All right. Y'all have a good night.
God, I feel like the ultimate fun hater buzzkill of 2020. I'm sorry, just call me mean mom. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Just one point from the audience, a message I got from someone saying the there's no sound on the ATT channel 99 that the meetings is being broadcast on. There's no sound. So maybe that's related to Councilman Hall's sound issue, too.
We'll, we'll get it rebooted in the morning.
I also, that reminded me, too, that there have been issues, people have pointed out in other meetings that the comment's not working on YouTube at times. So I don't know about that. But some people have wanted me to ask about that as well, to make sure that before we start meetings, everything is working, I suppose. So thank you.
Councilmember Holman, most of the time, refreshing the YouTube, refreshing their feed solves that problem. Most of the time. Just one.
Okay. And so in my, all of my years so in my, all of my years following city council meetings, as far as I've ever known, anybody that is interested is welcome to come to City Hall and and get up to the podium and speak. And city clerk may be able to clarify based on how long she's been the city clerk. I think that's been the policy of every mayor, probably going back a pretty long time, that nobody's ever had to be a Norman resident to speak city council meeting. Just to clarify for those interested in that specific topic, anybody has, anybody has always been able to come speak in our meetings as far as I know. I, I would like to have some maybe clarity for the council and future people that are interested in speaking about the exact policy on giving names and addresses, though. I could definitely understand why some folks would be apprehensive about wanting to share their name and their address. So I know there's, you know, rules that we have to follow as well. So, but I think everybody could probably do well to know more about that specific thing and why we, why we ask that when people want to speak. Because definitely don't want to discourage anybody from ever wanting to come down and share their thoughts with us out of fear that, you know, they might be exposing themselves to something, you know, dangerous. So you might want to have some discussion about that sometime in your future as well in regard to future meetings. I think I, the software issue, there was a public comment about the actual software we were looking to purchase. Tableau that Citizen was not recommending we go with that based on their experience I get in with software. And so I would be more interested or interested in hearing more about that, what other options there are and the pros and cons of, of that type of thing, if this is an expenditure that the police department would still like to bring forward. Same thing with the audio visual stuff. I think that's a pretty dire need in the police department, regardless of anything else going on really. The audio visual updates, at least in conference rooms, things like that. So, you know, with all these meetings being on Zoom and other things the police department is dealing with, if that is a budget item that is brought forward soon, I would be interested in seeing that as well, if we can identify the funds for that. And then the, I would also like to echo the comments of my colleagues about voting in Oklahoma. There's certainly a lot of things that our state does not do well. And most of us are very well aware of what those are. But one of the things our state is actually one of the best at is our election integrity. And so it is very safe to vote in Oklahoma. And I choose to vote in person all the time. I used to go vote early. But my polling or my precinct is the lowest voting turnout precinct in the whole county per capita. And so it's not uncommon even on presidential election. I've never had to wait in a line to vote at my polling place, even on election day, on presidential election day. And on city election days, it's not uncommon that the, the three people that work at my polling place, it's always the same three people. It's not uncommon that they go an hour or two sometimes without a single voter coming in. And so I always like to go vote in person, just so I can hang out kind of and talk city stuff or, you know, just get to know them a little better, things like that, keep them company. Because they are really great people. They've, they are, the three at my polling place are senior citizens. And so the need for more people to fill in those positions, especially the kind of vulnerable, you know, position that senior citizens are putting themselves in to work those polling places during the COVID pandemic. I think we need all able-bodied folks that, you know, can do it, step up and maybe fill in where needed. But I really appreciate all the people that, that do that. It's a, a very valuable service to the community. And I encourage people, whether it's going and voting in person so you can get to know the poll workers better or going and voting at the election board and getting to know some of the people that run the election board better. Or if it's a voting absentee by mail, whichever one works for you best. I encourage you to do that and, and make sure you're ready for not just the presidential election coming up, but there are elections and things to vote on throughout the year involving state issues, city issues, school board issues, all sorts of things that you get to vote on all the time. So take advantage of it and that's my advice on that. When it comes to the retreat, I am looking forward to this. I do every year. I usually will have like a packet. I usually bring like a word map of Ward Seven and give it to every word, every council member so you can, so you can understand Ward Seven a little bit better when you're making your decisions, you know, citywide. And so that's one of the, the aspects I try to use the retreat for is to, throughout the year, I gather information, feedback, observations, driving around the ward, different, driving around the city, different things like that, that I try to, you know, keep track of and bring to the retreat so that I can say, this is what I've observed over the past year in Ward Seven or in other parts of the city. This is what I would like to accomplish in Ward Seven. Well, this is an infrastructure problem that I think is the top problem in Ward Seven that I would like to be able to maybe identify this year. So that's one of the major aspects of it. But as mentioned too, it is generally the only real opportunity the council has throughout the year to get to know each other outside of just seeing each other in council meetings all the time. Because we don't, I mean, we all have our own lives going on. And in most cases, many of us didn't know each other before we became a city council member or we didn't know each other very well in many cases. So we don't, you know, have backyard cookouts at each other's house every weekend and do stuff like that as a group. We don't get that opportunity. And so the retreat is our one yearly chance to kind of sit together outside of the formal setting of a council meeting that's being broadcast. We have to dress up nice and, you know, all that stuff. Where we could kind of just, I usually wear sweats to the retreat, a hoodie and sweatpants. And it's an opportunity to kind of get to know each other better and understand the motivations where each of us are coming from, why we ran for city council, what we want to do. Some of our personal background, like, yeah, what, you know, tell us about your family. I'd like to know more, you know, that type of stuff, where you came from. And so the retreat is a really great opportunity to try to build build relationships, as someone referred to as bonding maybe. But also to lay out the priorities that we each have for the city of Norman over the next year. What policy-wise we would like to try to accomplish or at least get a discussion started about that can maybe be carried on down the road. So that's what it's about. It's a really great opportunity. I'm looking forward to participating in it with so many new faces this year from last year. So anyway, I appreciate all of you. I appreciate everybody watching at home and participating that way and sending us messages and all that stuff. And I look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, Councilor Peacock.
Thanks. Yeah, just like Councilmember Holman was alluding to, I, I also have a long list of things that I personally want to discuss at our retreat this weekend. But I'll take this opportunity now to kind of make an appeal to Ward Eight and ask for their priorities of what they would like to see discussed at the retreat. Please just send me any of those ideas to my Ward Eight email before Friday. I'll gladly make sure that they're a part of the conversation. I also want to echo the comments just made by Councilmember Hall. I think she's spot on. And the rest of my colleagues about finding ways to bring people together and not dividing us further apart. That's, I think that's incredibly important these days. It can't be stated enough. So what else do I have? Oh yeah. Lastly, I just want to give a quick plug for the proclamation that was signed recently by Mayor Clark in which restaurants can apply for a temporary outdoor expansion permit to utilize their sidewalk and parking for expanded seating areas. I, I really want to encourage our local businesses to take advantage of this opportunity and expand their footprint to allow for more social distancing, you know, hopefully without having to sacrifice their capacity. I also really hope that this kind of activity continues beyond COVID and it becomes the norm in which, you know, we can have some healthy sidewalks, you know, some sidewalks that are full of life and vibrancy at all times of the years. So yeah, really, really excited to see that continue and I hope people will take advantage of it. All right. Lastly, happy birthday to Councilman Foreman. So sign off for that.
Thank you. Yes, I know the, the virtual retreat is not ideal. But as the council member said, it's very 2020. And it is the safe thing to do right now and we are doing everything we can to keep this council safe. So I apologize. When it is safe, I promise we will have some sort of outdoor, everyone gets your own table and a bottle of wine and we'll, we'll chat. I don't know. I don't know. We'll, we'll do something. But this is not the weekend for that to happen, unfortunately. I do want to remind you all of other fun things you can do outside. On October 25th, we have our next watershed cleanup at Saxon Park, which is off of Highway Nine and 36th East from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Get some vitamin D, get some sunshine, fresh air and leave the world a better place. Our, our, our parks department, but our public works department does an amazing job of organizing these events. You just show up and it's a great way to give back and again, be outside and to do something somewhat social and to do it safely. And speaking of leaving the world a better place, in case you missed it for Ward Six and Ward Eight and even Ward Five, the recycling drop-off center that was at the county fairgrounds, the one that I use, has moved. They're doing some different renovations there. So it is temporarily going to be located at the Westwood Complex. So if you pull up and you're like, whoa, it's not gone forever. We appreciate our partnership with the county with that location. Serves a lot of North Norman and East Norman. But again, because of those cool renovations, if you haven't driven by there, the signage is looking quite nice. Nice upgrades for the Cleveland County Fairground, but it will return at some point. And as always, I want to thank all of you for the, the good conversation we had tonight. This is not an easy job. We touched on the pay earlier, which is, it is a labor of love. I, I don't want to call it laughable. That's the reality, but it is a labor of love. We do it because we care. Nobody is, is doing this halfway, especially in 2020. Man, especially in 2020. So we look forward to the retreat. For those of you that are new, we'll get a lovely kind of handout of what last year's policies and goals were and where we're at, you know, red, green is completed, yellow we're working on. And we'll get to adjust it, mix it, add stuff. It's, it's going to be a good time. We are getting late to this. Usually it's a summer thing, but we're rolling with it as best as we can. So I love your ideas. And when Councilmember Holman pulls out the packet for Ward Seven, you can see all the other wards go so not saying you have to bring a packet. We're going to be virtual. But I appreciate all of the prep that you guys do ahead of time. We all do, all, we know our own little universes. And so it has been fun as, as mayor to try to learn about everyone, not just the ward that I represented. Clearly partial to Ward Six and I think they have a great representative with Councilman Foreman. So I know she's going to bring a lot of issues as well. All right. Well, that is it for tonight. As always, thank you to city staff. We appreciate all that you do. And we'll see you on Friday. Good night, everyone.